We're going to call the meeting in order at 7:00 PM before Fortville Council.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Can you hear me? Okay.
All right. The motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2022. First on the agenda is new business Bob Stare with Fortville Action Eight to address the council regarding proposed project Main Street Patio. When you get to the drawing.
Once off Stare with Fortville Action. During the desk about doing another project. Is actually the area of frighten. Right where the ballards are, it's been closed off so Main Street we'd like to make a patio up there. One of the barrels in about eight barrels. Post in the barrels, there'll be concrete. That way we won't cuss at the street at all. Bring lights from those poles, add tables and benches. Ending call, we are also, I want to ask permission if the, or line or grant, it won't cover the whole thing. You approve us doing this. If we get the grant, there's a fair chance we could get some street art as well. Again, the street art would be something that a lot of people would be involved with. Main thing is we want to be able to do posts, lights, barrels, put the concrete and the tables. Very quick, really easy. Okay, yeah, first thing I'm gonna put five on brown. Okay, these, these actually are being. Not quite donated, but almost donated, we're doing drops. There are 55 gallons bourbon barrels that are handing out and. Our plan is to treat them, do some kind of stain, make them more weather resistant. Go about two thirds of concrete, pull in it. And then after that sets up, that, that pulls what will straight lights to. And there's electricity up high already that chill pointed out. So we'll spread lights very somewhere, probably exactly like we have in the alley. And then fill the top part of the barrels with dirt so we can have flowers. I don't know if you're all familiar, I know you are familiar with the area that we're talking about. There's already two big planters and two benches and three, we were proposing possibly four additional tables or benches, whichever works out best. But I think that looking at it again, just on the way here, it looks like four tables work pretty well. Leave the benches there. People just shopping. They want to hang out, they want to take something to go from one of the restaurants and sit there or bring their own. This is a nice patio area for people. That's our plan. I actually got. That's basically, except it's gonna look nicer than that. Any questions? It's a real simple plan, but that's. They do. We wouldn't put the umbrellas in, but. We're proposing to. One of the things that. We've noticed is that some of the Thursday night. Marcus market will set up in there. That night limit the number of stands inside the forward. If we have tables there, I would kind of recommend that we mount those to the service so that they don't move all over the place. You know, groups of six or seven of the tables together, that's our recommendation, you guys. But that might limit the number of people inside the forward area. Or the likely you could still get six farmer market stands in there. I don't know how many there are. First start proposing just. Sales we thought the farmer's market stand. Several stands inside. It's a nice addition to the town, Thursday night is the one that's bad, but we. Could be there all year round.
Are you, are you assuming that from what's already there, you kind of separate most in the alley already?
Separate, yeah, we'll have eight posts. We'll have eight posts in that area and the lights will just go around, they will crisscross second.
It won't be attached to the body here, that's not, so it's gotta be separate.
The, the engineer that did this made it a little hard to see, but the, those little things going around there. I try to make it as simple as I can. Anyway, that's, that's pretty much, I didn't cover it over the. And again, this would be like the alley. We're, we're pretty much done with the alley, we have paperwork to turn in. But you know, Walter, you asked. That again, we need the towns. It's if that's you, stop it. Anyway, I'll, and I'll work with Joe through all this, I mean, Joe and I and Liv, we have sat down just. Talking about how this would look, but we would, we'll make it as comfortable as we can for the, for people in town. We thought this would be really, really nice at nighttime, just a nice place to sit. You know, this, you could just have groups there, baby girls night out could meet there. Use it for winter fest, whenever, there's a lot of reasons you could have that there.
With the concrete, those posts that are in there, is that strong enough to where we put some sails up there?
Right, and the poles, the poles. Yeah, umbrellas would probably be okay in the tables, but that's a, yes. That's 22 feet apart. From one side to the other, that's a pretty big sail.
So if it did get left out, nobody shut by any chance of them moving down the street, you'd be dead. Or umbrellas is actually bolted around in the concrete or whatever, so I recommend we need umbrellas. Unless one of us see it, it's probably gonna stay.
Yeah, and you know, and.
So are you just, are you, this far, just you proposing a decision tonight, or you want us to look it over for consideration? What, what are you asking?
I'm asking for a decision tonight because I want to apply for a grant tomorrow, basically. And everything just came along really fast. We had applied for a grant earlier and they recommended that there's a different phase that goes in HCCF has and starts tomorrow.
Does your grant have to be this specific, or it's just you're wanting to do something?
It's not so specific.
Yeah, they want to know what we're spending money on. I'm sure it's mainly when we're done, we have to turn the receipts.
The only reason I asked you that a while, what kind of leadway do you guys have? I have no problem with the forward, but obviously you and Joe talking, there might be some adjustments.
Oh, absolutely, that's nice, this is gonna cost more than $5,000, the grant would be for $5,000. It'll cost more than that to do this, that's the maximum grant that we give. Like the alley. The alley, we got a $15,000 grant and there's about $36,000. Disco and then actual labor and the materials that Fortville actually paid for. So it's a considerable more expense than, they want us to have some skin, that's why.
You have any questions? Any questions from the public or comments?
He's saying if someone costs more than $5,000, where's that other money gonna come from?
No, 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 it's, it's totally from, like, we're, by the way, there's a golf valley on August. Forms right here.
So donations basically?
Exactly.
Donations and sponsorships.
No tax money, nothing from the town. A town does help us a lot later.
Thank you for answering my phone.
You're fine.
Everyone is really is familiar with where the space is that, yeah, saying opposed, right? Any other questions or comments about Fortville Action?
I have one question, as far as if you take this for your application, for your grant. If the grant, how long? We have to stay like this for, if we find we need to make some modifications or anything, is that gonna?
No, it's, it's mainly the expenses, they want to know if we. All somewhat what we turned in for, but they, they want to know what we're going to use the money for in general. Because of what we turned in and the way the lights turned out in the alley was a little bit different. The furniture, we didn't specify what furniture we were exactly gonna put in. We just said we were going to, we were turning receipts in. They, I think you saw they came over for ribbon cutting and they were fine with what they've done. We just have some final paper turning on that. Back to back problems here, I thought this would be a really neat thing for me to read.
You like, you know, say somehow the rise of shade.
Well, maybe like once we do this, if this is a kind of to come up, whether we find sales need to wait, maybe.
Yes.
Are there going to be trash bins installed near this?
Yes.
Kids been going through the alley, drawing garbage everywhere.
Well, we added two trash cans up to the alley. Yeah, so, just because of that, it's trying really hard to make it easy, I'm waiting to see some trash sitting on top of the trash can. Yes, that's a good, yeah, because we want to make it as easy to keep it lean as we can.
Are we comfortable having Joe have final approval or do we need to come back? I'm okay with Joe. Come on, proceed. I'll make a motion to approve the Main Street Patio request pending. Okay, we got first and second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
I just have it.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and apply for the grant, whether we get the grant or not, we're gonna do something. We're, we'll do some work this, this how it's.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the council would consider resolution number 2022-7A regarding the transfer of ownership of Landmark Park from Mount Vernon Candy's School Corporation to the town of Fortville. Is that new, Alex? Sure. So this really is a statutory process. School Corporation decided to donate this property to the town. The law allows for two governmental entities to transfer property between themselves, but part of the process is this resolution. Each body has to adopt and approve a substantially similar identical resolution saying, on the school's behalf, they adopted one saying, we, the Mount Vernon Corporation, wants to donate this property to the town. The resolution for you says, school corporation wants to give us this property, we want to accept it. It empowers Fritz and Joe to sign everything that they may need to record and finalize the transaction. Those both is statutory procedures. Council would adopt a similar resolution to give this to the school for final. Any questions for Alex? Who representatives of the school here? Any conversations with the school? They, they've been a really good part of the process.
I think they just got a lot of hearts and power, we have a lot of hearts and power, they're saying.
Any other questions, comments, council? Make motion to approve resolution 2022.
Can the public ask questions? Uh, yeah, is there anything in the transfer that indicates that it, it has to stay apart, that the town can't reuse it for something else?
I don't think there is. There may be something in the treaty that's already recorded on the parcel that has that.
I mean, because as a, as a town number, I would want it to stay apart if it is somehow was used as a method to convert it to a town service. The town uses it. Whereas I'm sure the school has it, but is there, as a park, I would want that to carry. I imagine anything else.
He's wrong with the park.
Well, the intent of the current town council is, but. Once it's done, it's done. So can there be something added to where?
There may, the answer is there may already be a commitment on the deed now that runs the land or that owns it, that keeps it as a park. If there's not, then yes, you can add that back to the line. Or actually use some.
No, go ahead.
Or actually use something. He says it's supposed to be maintained for public use. Somewhere to that, I just didn't know how this resolution. Would alter that or re, should not alter, it should run with the.
My question is, if the school's the ones who are responsible for taking care of that property, except for mowing and weeding and doing all of that, if it transfers to the town, we're gonna be responsible for that. So is that in our budget as the town to pay for that, to have that done?
We've been paying for that.
Also, I just want to ask, okay, I just want to make sure that.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-7A, the resolution approving donation of real property to the town of Fortville in regards to Landmark Park. First and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move on. 3C, council would consider holding first reading under 2022-6. This one's actually an error on the agenda, we did this at the last meeting. We crossed that out. Council would consider adopting authorizing the RDC to move forward with the eminent domain actions for 61 or 611 to 613 High Street, first resolution and 624 High Street, second resolution. This is me as well, much like the transfer of the property from schools, these two resolutions are just a function of the law concerning eminent domain. Within the RDC, working with Joe and Adam, has been looking at these two properties, which will be necessary for the South Madison Street extension and redevelopment area that we're taking that. They're two, they're two separate properties, of course, separate ownership. The law requires you to make an offer, appraisals, and the RDC has gone through that. The law also requires that the council authorize moving forward with given domain if we can't reach agreement with the property or purchase the property. So it is just a check the box. Function, these resolutions saying that the council authorizes me, if we can't reach an agreement to move forward with final condemnation complaints to acquire this property. Like we've seen in the past, the hope is that we do reach an agreement with respect to 611 and 613 High Street. The property owners there refuse. Are offered, and so I've actually filed that complaint, so that's the why it's a little bit different. It says that you can ratify, the law allows you to ratify what's been done. That's a little bit different. Process along, finish filing that. 624. That, this has gone out, one of those in the box a couple times because we couldn't get service for the different owners of that parcel and we couldn't get them to accept the, the provided notice of the offer. So that's why it was in the paper, it's at the clerk's office, if they want to pick it up after 30 days, if we don't have a agreement. To save, and then what I started to say is that hopefully, and a lot of times, we need, most of the time, once the condemnation action is filed and worked, they end up finding a way to reach an agreement and resolve these things. Hopefully we'll, we'll have that in this case as well, but the purpose of the resolutions, again, it's just the law requires the council to perform. They say if we can't get this treaty upon. County attorney, go ahead and. All right, so we have two of them here, one of them will be 7B and one will be 7C. I want to mark the 611, 613, 7B. And 624, 7C. Any questions, comments on the council?
So is there any way to get that straight through if we don't get this off the paper?
And I'll open it up to the public, I know when we started using terms like condemnation, eminent domain, lots of questions pop up. Questions, comments from the public over what Alex, county attorney's speaking of, or what the intent or what the hopeful and goal of this is.
I don't know what you were talking about.
Where are you talking about?
Broadway diner.
Essentially, where State Road 13 runs into Broadway, they're in front of the library. We're looking to extend 13, well, 13 is a state road, but it's a town street. It'll go on through that stoplight, through the building, and the back end comes back around, ties into Maple Street, you know, high back end to 200 West. We've actually got traffic like this coming west then. Maple Street, it will, I stopped construction, it's going to have been prior October this year. And but it's, it's where we're going south through Broadway. Yes and no, actually, just, just to make it clear, we have actually, we've been in conversation with all the property owners and they're in favor, you know, they were willing to work with us, eminent domain, I think it's the offer that came back, they wasn't happy with it. So the eminent domain process allows us to.
One footnote on that, now it's correct if I'm wrong, the offer that we are allowed legally to make, we can only go to a certain limit by law. If the property owner accepts it, or they do, they say, no, we can turn it down. And in that case, there's no agreement made, this is, these are the next steps in Alex's league. In order for us to have negotiations above and beyond the potentially, we're legally allowed to offer, these are the steps I have to take.
Now, are your offers a subset of the steps that's out?
You paid for a place to. That's, that's the, it's like. So again, for Alex's comments, just kind of look at the balance, check the box in order to. Again, it's the reason why this is for you, the legislative authorities, redevelopment commissions used to be able to exercise eminent authority on their own without the council approval. Several years ago, six or seven years ago, the legislature changed the law and added these types of procedures so that the town council actually has to have a. Must have been some situations where redevelopment commissions maybe were taking some actions that councils want. That's not the case here, council's been aware of this, it's not hard to see, that's why.
The property was, the property manager, he's had been able to serve any of that stuff, I mean, maybe that conversation.
I know Joe has talked with.
So there has been an ongoing name, they know, they're aware of it, that we can't reach all four of the property owners.
And so in the box we have to check for notice means they. It'll go to be a state, so it'll. Because what we have to do is send the notices to addresses as. The accessories, so that we pull those addresses, pull the tapes and send it to them.
But this is, being approved, that's what I, we say, and if we can't come to this, we're going to.
All right, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-7B, a resolution authorizing the exercise of eminent domain specifically in regards to property located at 611, 613, High Street. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? These are resolutions, so they're just one degree. Leading on the resolution number 2022-7C, make a motion to approve resolution. Resolution authorizing the exercise of eminent domain specifically in regards to property located at 624 High Street in Fortville. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Secrets, we have so. Alright, whole business. For A, council would conduct a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two-two-six-P regarding the voluntary annexation of Burnet Township, Hubble Simmons Cemetery. Good evening to the writer on the avenue, Zach Kapowski, the planning village director of the town. This particular item is pretty straightforward, as you recall at a previous meeting, first reading was held, those ordinance. The purpose of it is simply have the cemetery that's on Ohio Street or ten fifty north, across from Whitestone, to have town limits. It's absolutely not going to change the ownership, it'd still be retained by the ownership. But because of the recent expansions of Thursday rules and property annexed, the town has dealt with having a random pocket of incorporated territory. So, by law, we're required to have a public hearing on this, and we did publish it in the Greek for the quarter. Just wanted to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn from the regularly scheduled town council meeting, in order to proceed with the public hearing of ordinance twenty-two-two-six. Actually, just.
Suspend.
Yeah. The normally scheduled council meeting, in order to proceed with ordinance number twenty-two-two-six. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now we're gonna make motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two-two-six-P regarding the voluntary annexation of Burnet Township, Hubble Simmons Cemetery. Aye. Slip it to the public. Any questions, comments, in regards to the annexation? Hubble Simmons, everyone that we're asked. So no comments or questions from the public, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding ordinance number twenty-two-two-six. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to re-continue the regularly scheduled. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
There's a lot of motions. Anything else need to be done on that, Adam?
No, it'll come back, no, also for tonight, it'll come back, the future meeting for the second reading, the final reading. And then, and that's when I, I have to. Adopt it, and we would, if we're waiting for it, to get reported with the county, and then officially.
Alright, four B, council would consider holding second reading of ordinance number twenty-two-two-six-D. Regarding rezone for the Ridgeview West, PUD, six-hundred North Main Street.
I'll give the more limited version of the presentation that we provided to the plan commissioners, to say. They fed in a lot of the information that was provided to them. If there's anything that I may have missed, I didn't do, but just as a quick overview, if you recall, this went to you for first reading a few meetings ago. This is a project, the applicant is Hudson Investing. It's on property that's owned by Bob Spinner, it's at approximately six-hundred North Main Street, invested in group of apartments. For fresh memory, the property today is on residential three-point-five. So that's predominantly a single-family residential designation, although you can do duplexes in that designation. This developer is seeking a rezone of a planned unit development, or PUD, which will allow for a multi-family market rate apartment complex. And the property size is about four acres, and on those four acres, they're looking to construct two three-story buildings, each with two-story portions of the north and south end, and each about forty-seven thousand two hundred square feet in size, each with forty-one. There is a property here, if you take a look at the area, you can see off to the north is the timber ridge subdivision. East is the Ridgeview Apartments, going to the south. Off to the west is Mr. Spinner's, the remainder of his property, we can still, at this point, be owned by him, if it's still the tone. Here's another bird's eye, in case we need to refer to this. Stomping map, everything that you see in that yellow color is that R-three-point-five. Although off to the east, directly to the east, of the grandfather, multi-family designation, and people are, that we're not in the category. So known as R-dash-four. What year was that though? I think we'll take questions at the end of the council. If you take a look at the comprehensive plan map that was put in place by the town back twenty-fourteen, parcel. Residential, so for any rezone that being considered, why are you supposed to consider this? Should be noted that comprehensive. Single-family or multi-family.
Fritz, we're getting some feedback on your end.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to leave, because I'm not able to hear anything. Everything that you guys are saying is all muffled, so I'm gonna leave the meeting, okay? Thank you.
Right, so this is a concept elevation, that is actually shown in the PUD, and we're moving forward with the project. This is, they would need to build a structure, substantial performance to this render. Did we take a look at the site plan? You can see the features, an extension of Main Street, a connection between Timber Ridge and areas to the south. Connection that has been contemplated for a number of years, and you can see that both of those buildings would flank the Main Street extension, which would be a public street. And then parking would be provided around the back side of the facility. Again, these are the various development topics that we went into a lot of detail, the plan information, we could certainly come back to these as necessary. But what we did is, we have a couple different comparisons, one is what they're actually proposing in their planned unit development, which is basically unique zoning to this particular project, and of why you're allowed to approve unique development standards for this project. The other option that they could do, although there's some limitations to the type of project that they'd like to do, because it could potentially have mixed use of residential and commercial. In theory, they could go, they could ask for a straight rezone to multi-family, or current multi-family designation. And so, we did analysis to compare what they're asking for versus if they went to a straight rezon, a multi-family, what they would be held to. But again, it should be noted that as part of this process of this unique zoning, which is pretty common for redevelopment projects, it is something that the council can adopt. I did want to point this out, because this is something that is in state law, that you are required to at least consider, much like the plan commission when they make the recommendation. So, each of these different points that are brought up in state law, it doesn't mean that, that, whether the answer to those questions are yes or no, that's up for you to decide. It's not a binding action, all it is, is that you've actually considered these topics, thought about them in your analysis. So, the first thing is, is this action, is rezon action, would that be consistent with the comprehensive plan? Myself and the plan commission said yes, it would be, that the town's future growth concept map, as I pointed out earlier, identifies the area as residential. And the comprehensive plan text does emphasize the importance of having a wide variety of housing choices in the community, i.e. single-family housing, multi-family, et cetera. Number two is, is it consistent with the current conditions and character of the current structures? It's always tricky on how to answer, how to address this question, whether we're looking right at the, at the land that the building's gonna sit on, or are we looking at a slightly larger area? If we're looking at just the land, obviously it's not consistent with the current use, because it's undeveloped land at this point, but obviously it would be in performance with the zoning, when they go to develop. But looking more broadly, if you're looking at the project that was built to the east, and it is a similar land use of multi-family, in fact, these development standards would exceed those development standards that that project could build. The third item is, is it consistent with the most desirable land? I would say yes, that it would connect Main Street, which allows for easier access between north and south areas, and it'd be beneficial for emergency response. And given the size of the property, four acres, doing the multi-family use to, to make the best use of the land is a logical choice. Number four, is it consistent with the conservation of property values? I'd say yes, that stringent development standards requiring a high-quality development within a planned unit development, will ensure property values on nearby properties are maintained. And then last is, is this consistent with responsible growth development? Or would you be yes, that allowing high-quality, multi-family infill development potentially makes use in a walkable environment meets this objective? Now, in terms of remonstrance and comments that were received by the public, first, the town council members had no negative comments during the first reading, when this was before you all. There was remonstrance at the plan commission public hearing on June twenty-eighth, and to summarize the concerns, a lot of concerns over traffic, density, height, and land use. The plan commission's recommendation at that meeting on the twenty-eighth, again, after holding of the public hearing that's required by law, they issued a positive recommendation to all council, and they issued four conditions, which came up based on items at the meeting. Number one is, they asked to have the height lowered if possible. Developer will comply with that, they agreed to forty-five feet instead of fifty, that's in a revised PUD. So there, by the way, there's these four changes that we're talking about, they're highlighted in the actual ordinance that you see, so you can see where those were inserted. It should be noted that forty-five feet matches the multi-family zone district height. District of citizens, right. Second item was to provide some sort of traffic calming, developer will comply, will provide bump outs with a crosswalk, maybe a couple of crosswalks that gets the air out, but there is language referring to that topic in that revised PUD. Third item was to provide streetlights, and developer will comply, will provide two public streetlights. One on both ends of the project near the entrances, to the parking lots, that's reflected in the PUD. And lastly, they've committed to wrapping the existing buildings in the Ridgeview Apartments with fiber cement siding, will comply with that, again, language in that revised PUD. So just the, the next step on the project, if it were to be approved tonight, there'd be a separate construction plan review, including drainage review, building plan review and permitting would all be necessary, and those reviews will be done by staff as is customary. So with that, if you have any questions, I think we're gonna have to address those developers here while they've done a brief presentation.
Alright, so I'm assuming the majority of you here are for comments on this project, this proposal thing. So the way we're gonna do this is we'll have some discussion up here, both council, if there's any other government officials, the plan commissioner, if I want to have, make some comments, we can do that, please, two or three of us here. And we'll certainly open one to public comment today. With that, first, who would like to do a first big question? I know, I have a question, I know I wasn't at the last meeting, I think they caught up, watched that task video that's been taken in the meeting. Fritz is right, it's hard, it's hard to hear sometimes, so, just temporary.
So all the recommendations the plan commission made, they've accepted the PUD, right?
Yes.
Okay, correct, good.
Those are what we have here in front of us, eh?
They're highlighted, and we're not gonna highlight them.
I have some questions about that as well, so.
Did you say about stationers, Scott? They're doing presentations.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, do we have any comments before we have the position to come forward, if they go to this page? I'll look for more comments or questions, so I might be able to do that. Alright, you can come forward. Please page your name. Did you have any, a ladder where you have it here?
Kent Ritter, with Hudson Investing, represents the ownership period of this, possibly development, and also the current owners of original apartments. So I wanted to just provide, some of you heard this before, what, just put context around, kind of what we've done with Ridgeview Apartments, the current plan, and how that incorporates into this new project, and really just give some context around our process. You know, I'd say I recognize that there's present cons to, to every project that has to occur. So I thought, you know, I would provide, from our perspective, just a little bit of context around why, why would this be a good idea? For the town, based on our experience, that current ownership of the area, so. Idea? Or project? So, um. So we bought Ridgeview Apartments from Bob Spinner back in October of twenty-one, with the idea of investing about five-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in improvements at the property, which is well underway, we've renovated about twenty percent of units. We, and we're in process of adding, so, here's the list. New signage, cleaning up the landscaping on the property, we've done a lot of landscaping, converting the light into, into the units. We're adding a deck and gazebo area in the middle of the property where that grass is, we're adding some railing stations, it's the place where people come and hang out. The parking lot is about to go through a pothole fix and seal and stripe now that we're, we're through the winter. And, you know, and just in general, trying to just, I mean, we fixed all the others, we fixed downspouts, we've done a lot of just for maintenance on property. And we're gonna continue through that process, really, through the, through the end of this year. One thing that we know has been, kind of sore spots that I've heard, just something that stuck out, it is the current vinyl siding on the property doesn't meet current development standards. That's an extremely expensive endeavor to try to put aside, especially fiber, fiber cement siding on all those buildings, that would be about our entire renovation budget. So one, one idea we had about a way to get that done would be to help facilitate that as part of this larger development. And that way, the interiors of units would really, this is what the interiors used to look like, this is what a new renovated unit looks like, these are real pictures. And so while the interiors will be completely redone, now we would have the opportunity to redo the exteriors as well, and we end up with what, for long intents and purposes, looks and feels like a brand. A branded property that I think the town is proud of. And so that's really, this was our original intent, I can be honest with you, the original intent wasn't to divide land and develop it. But we, the thing that I've, and, and we have a property management company, everybody runs it day-to-day, but the feedback that I've gotten is, we have about a forty-person waitlist at, at Ridgeview, for forty-eight units. There's a desire to live in Fortville, there's just not enough housing. And I mean, that's really the mission of my company, is to provide affordable, modern housing. And I mean, that's really the mission of my company, is to provide affordable, modern housing throughout Indiana. And that's, that's what we do. Most of it's through, through renovation projects like this. But we saw a unique opportunity here in talking with Bob and working with him and understanding what, what that could be. And we know there's a desire and need for it, and, and we think that we can really fill a gap of, you know, where people want to come into town and, and, you know, housing prices have gone up 15% this year, 15% last year. A lot of people can't afford some family homes. There's a gap there, though, I think we can fill, where we can bring people into town. I love the idea of being able to walk down Main Street to Fox Garden and Taxman and all the good stuff that's there. So I think it would be a really attractive property from just the walkability standpoint for folks. And the current Ridgeview is all the same floor plan, it's two-bedroom, one baths. This property, the, the proposal would fill that gap of providing one bed, one baths, two bed, two baths, and three bed, two baths, so you can have more variety for people in different living situations. And so the idea would be to make it a more complete property. Also, we manage Ridgeview from far, because there's no management office on site. You really can't afford, with only 48 units, to, to have a full-time person. The, the economics just don't work. And so in adding this additional property, what we would actually, we're proposing is to put a management office on site, actually add another amenity area, which is going to be like a fitness center, maybe like a game room, something for everyone's use. But I think the big thing is not getting that management on site, we need to have people there, have a manager on site to monitor the property. If you guys have been by there, even though we've added an additional dumpster since we, since we bought the property, and we've added an additional pickup base since we bought the property, people dump, because they know there's free dumpsters there. And so we're constantly paying to move that stuff out of the way. I think having management on site would help with things like that, you know, so it helps keep the property clean and maintained, so. That, that's just some of the context I want, I wanted to share. I know there's all the points of view, but that, that's our thought on, we think it can be a value to the town. I know there's a need there, because I have a list of people that want to live in our apartment. And we think that we can fill a nice gap. There hasn't been market rate apartments built before, though, and probably since Ridgeview, maybe just after Ridgeview. Probably been close to 15, 20 years.
What year was Ridgeview built, if you don't mind me asking?
2000. And so the idea, so that's our idea on doing it. Russell is actually going to walk through some of the particulars and share some of the details. But I just wanted to, so you see my face and give you a little bit of context.
For the record, my name is Russell Brown, I'm an attorney with the law from Parkland, 320 North Marion Street, Suite 1100 in Indianapolis. I'm going to walk through, as Kent mentioned, walk through just some details of, of this space, too. Adam already did a great job, as he did at the planning commission, and walked through many of the particulars, but I'll highlight a handful of things that you think are important. As mentioned, this would be 80 new units, a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. The planning commission, the question was, well, what does the town, quote-unquote, get out of, of this development? So we put some numbers together we think are important and impactful to what is happening and what would happen through this, this development. So you have annual property taxes, approximately $180,000 at completion, based on, based on our current valuation expectation. You would have new residents, retained residents. The assumptions we utilize is one working individual in each unit, $60,000 annual income. And what does that mean to, to annual spending in local businesses? Approximately, statistics show approximately 80% of discretionary spending happens on a local level. So that's from our calculations, a little bit more than a million dollars in annual spending in the local community. You have county out annual income tax, more than $75,000 in, because that follows the person where they live, regardless of where they work. So there's a new, essentially a new revenue to the county, which the town gets a portion of as well. You have annual water and sewer income, and you have water, sewer, and tap fees, nearly half a million dollars for this proposed development. So we do think, in addition to all those things that we talked about already, adding to the housing stock, you do have real income, real ongoing income opportunities to community, to local utilities, and to local businesses. So, we're going to walk through, and we'll walk through very, very quickly. Site plan modification here shows the bump out that we talked about for traffic calming measures. That was a suggestion of your police chief, as an opportunity to, utilizes and works well in some existing areas of town, specifically downtown. So you use bump outs, you use crosswalks as that traffic calming measure. So that revised plan was prepared. The rewrap of the existing Ridgeview, we see that siding that is added as a condition of your PUD. But that would be completed prior to a certificate of occupancy for the new developer. That is significant, it's a significant concession, and it's a significant threshold. You can construct everything you want, but if you can't put anybody in there, you can't generate any revenue. So we believe that's a significant concession, and is a very meaningful concession by the developer, that that could be completed prior to any new certificate of occupancy of the new developer. We have reduced the level of height to 45 feet on three stories, which was the intention, and now we're matching our intention with the PUD itself. Another question that came along was parking capacity. This PUD has a 1.5 per unit proposed parking capacity. There's actually a concern by staff of having it over parks, having too many parking spots available. So 1.5 is what we agreed upon with the cap, at 130 spaces. And we have the ability with consultation with the town to add parking spaces if those, that became an issue. Obviously, optimal, optimal parking is the goal. We had testimony of the planning commission, the previous owner, that in his ownership of the, of the existing development, there is not a time when he's witnessed it being full. Thought that was meaningful, so you do have overflow opportunities, if necessary, on the existing Ridgeview. Another thing, and this goes back to one of Kent's comments, having onsite management. Single-family developer has a lot of control over who parks there, how many cars are parked, and when they park. Things that onsite manager could enforce. You could limit the number of cars or permits, you could do it by a variety of, various ways, that necessarily aren't applicable in a single-family situation. You can't limit the number of cars that neighbors have, including their large trucks, as we testified to. You can't, you can't limit those in ways that you can as a single-family, as a multifamily developer and manager. So we believe that is an advantage, and is a way that we can comply with the proposed parking ratios here. We do believe that we have thoughtfully designed this development to fit in the surrounding neighborhood. As mentioned, at the planning commission, we purposely designed the end caps to be the two-story with pitch roofs. The goal being to mimic a two, a two-story single-family. Put that out, this has a proposed peak of 36 feet. The R3.5 has a maximum height of 35 feet. So we are attempting to comply with those that are nearby, and what could be constructed on the single-family zone properties nearby. The buildings are oriented, so the taller is away from those existing single-family, oriented towards the extension of Main Street. And we believe that does decrease or eliminate any negative impact on the height of these two adjoining properties. There have been, there was discussions, and as mentioned in the staff report, there is potential here for commercial use. That was built in through discussions, as this project has wound its way through, through discussions over the last several months. Developers' intent currently is not to have commercial development on the site, but the PUD allows for it. If those are not utilized commercially, they'll be utilized for amenity space, it'll be utilized for leasing office, for amenity space for the residents of all 128 units that are available there. And notice that one is at, they'll get an end cap, one is located more internal to the building. But there's not a intent, currently, to have, to have that commercial space act later. Adam did a good job pointing you to the five statutory considerations that the, the planning commission and you as a town are asked to give reasonable regard to. That's the community statute, that's the language of the statute, and we think that's important. Adam did a good job of walking through why staff's recommendation, I want to add to some of those. I think those are important for you to, to add to your consideration, see me. Is it consistent with the town plan? Staff answered yes, we believe the answer is yes as well, for, for a couple of additional reasons. One is that you need to have multifamily of varying sizes available, having one, two, and three bedrooms, for the reasons that Kent mentioned, are important to have a variety of your housing stock. Two, is it consistent with the current conditions compared to your current structures? Having an infill multifamily development adjacent to an existing multifamily development, we think fits into a T. Putting this, if it was four-sides, single-family, if it was four-sides, commercial, if it was not adjacent to multifamily, that question would be harder to answer in the affirmative, but we believe it can and should be answered in the affirmative. Is it consistent with the most desirable use of a land? To my knowledge, I'm an eastside guy, I'm not a Fortville person. But to my knowledge, there's not a lot of existing four, five, six-acre parcels within your corporate limits that are available for, for completely developed or infill developed. We believe that this is an appropriate location, given the proximity of existing multifamily. Also, the connection of Main Street, which frankly, represents single-family developers as well. Frankly, the extension of, of Main Street doesn't pencil as a multifamily development. That's not going to be something that developers are going to take on, it would be a town obligation if it were ever to be accomplished. Doesn't, doesn't work in the performance to make that happen. Fourth, is it consistent with the conservation of property values? The statute actually says that it's consistent with the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction. Now, just the adjacent pieces of property, throughout the jurisdiction, throughout the town, as the development of this property, this rezoning request, is that consistent with the conservation of property values? We believe yes, it sets the standard for any multifamily development. Where going above and beyond where required, you have an elevation that's committed to, you have materials that are committed to. Things that may not be, if we came into this straight rezoning to multifamily, would not have the ability to require consistent. We think that does, sets the, sets the standard. It's a new market rate development, as Kent mentioned, something that hasn't been in the community for quite a while. And finally, is it consistent with responsible growth and development? Infill development like this, it is impactful, it's beneficial, because it doesn't require the extension, a significant extension of the facilities, doesn't require significant changes to the building structure. So infill development of this type, this magnitude, we believe does provide for consistent, responsible growth and development on what could be one of the last offices that exist in corporate markets to have this type of market rate development. So with that, we're happy to answer questions that you have, or we're happy to sit and respond to questions that others.
Questions do you have?
I have one, I guess I have one. So taking off that five foot, so your mechanicals are going to be on the ground now, so they'll stay up there.
No, they'll stay on the roof. We, we just wanted to confirm that we were able to screen them, and do it in a way that, maybe you're obligated. Some, some jurisdictions don't count screening in their overall height, some have different requirements for how, what the vantage point is to require screening. So if we went back, the architect confirmed that we can screen them in accordance with your coordinates without that additional height. So yes, so we'll still be rooftop mounted, in the center part of the building.
Can you explain the lighting for me a little bit better? Assistant, are you putting lights on Main Street, or is it in the parking lots, or the both?
There was a request at the planning commission to consider adding street lighting along Main Street. And one of the concerns came was, would this be just a super dark area of, of Main Street if there was no, no street lighting installed? So we kind of worked with staff following that to determine what would be the best location. So there's one on the north end, one on the south end. I think the style would be consistent with what is on Main Street downtown. So those were the, that was the discussion. We would still have, you know, your typical onsite lighting, building lighting, break-down lighting, those things. But this would be in addition to those, but the goal being to make sure that this wasn't a dark, dark portion of Main Street.
There won't be a lot of lighting anyway, I mean, honestly, these are probably more aesthetic than, than else, but it fits with the aesthetic, it was requested. But, you know, one of our big tendencies is safety, so as far as, almost every property that's wired, upgrading LED lights and adding more light typically. So parking lots will be well lit, buildings will have lights on themselves, but now, you know, some Main Street lights will be on.
But I guess I just, when it comes to lighting, I think neighbors there are used to quiet, darker. I've driven down there a bit lately to sort of feel for it, and you get used to that. Is it going to be really, really bright? I mean, the points stand out, obviously, from what anyone that already has. Safety is always an issue in a parking lot, so I appreciate the lighting aspect of that, but, and I'm sure everybody's going to have questions about that, all that, but I, I guess a visual of knowing, like, is it going to be really bright?
So the, our PUD ordinance requires downlight lights. The, the standard ordinance doesn't, requires cutoff or require, it doesn't require downlight. And so this is, the goal being to be sensitive to those single-family uses nearby, to have downlight, so you're lighting the property yourself, not the adjacent property. We're not, we're not paying to light somebody's backyard or side yard, we're paying to light the, the parking lot. And that's part of the commitment, and that's one of the provisions included in the PUD ordinance, is a really used downlight.
Alright, I, I didn't have some, and I apologize if these were any answered, I don't believe they have or been asked, but. How tall is the current Ridgeview? Okay, so we don't know how tall they are. How tall are they in relation to what's being proposed? Because the current Ridgeview are two stories. This one, even though it's three in the middle, we're still talking three. So what, how in relationship?
Eyeballing, they would be similar height. I mean, this current Ridgeview has some parapets and it has a peak on top. These on the end are 36 feet, which I would venture says is probably smaller. In the middle, they go up where it's flat, up to that 45. The top five feet really being just a parapet to cover the chemicals, right? It, it's not going to be grossly taller.
And one of my concerns is, is you're coming down the approach of Main Street. I understand that the ends, I appreciate the ends are lower. You're going to see, you're coming up with the approach of Main Street, you're going to see that high line, right, as you're approaching it. And I, I was just curious how that was prepared, if it was already there, and is it going to be the tallest thing in that immediate vicinity? Or is it going to be the same? So we don't know how tall the current ones are, roughly 35 feet, 35 feet roughly, alright? So we're talking, we're talking 45 and 50 on these, right?
45, 45. In the middle, right? So we've got 25 to 50 feet on these, and are 36.
Alright, I mean, you, you answered that, I don't, I mean, that's, that's, that answer might, might correct me, that's what I was, what I was looking for there.
Yeah.
And the proposed 45.
Right, there's a certain factor of economics, and you, you have to have a certain management system to be able to drive it forward. So we couldn't get rid of all of the three-story. And the way we tried to meet was the middle, by moving to the middle and try to create as much of an aesthetic of a two-story pitch roof only as possible. And that was our, our compromise, to try to get the feel, okay?
I do tend to, this may be more, for Adam to jump into. I know you said the current intent is not for any commercial use, and there's no commercial use around there at all. And Adam, can you expand on what type, if commercial uses were allowed, and that was something that would be in the future? What might be allowed there, I haven't heard that discussed. Just a couple of things on that point is, the property up until three, four years ago was actually sold entirely for commercial. Actually, in working with Mr. Spinner at the time, the town was uncomfortable that there was such a large swath of commercial there. It could have been any sort of commercial use that was allowed under a neighborhood commercial designation. So that's why it was rezoned for residential three point five. Now, for this particular project, as you can see, the, the type of commercial that they would do is limited by the size of the buildings. And what suites they may have available, even if they want to go down that path. But anything that would be allowed in the commercial neighborhood zoning district would be allowed in this particular property. And to the same extent, if there's a special exception that's needed, um, in that zoning district. Typical, um, commercial neighborhood zoning district, they would also be geared as well. So the more passive uses, are they retail, or are they? Obviously, so that, that zoning district is primarily geared towards, uh, retail, small retail, small services, things of that nature. So it, it allows to have potential, uh, coffee shop, workout center, very low impact, like, commercial uses. Maybe even an office or some. Something you mentioned there, because I was certainly here when we did the rezon, um, back to that. And we did it with attention, it was a, a nice, nice, uh, I should say, current property owner to, to go away from that commercial. It was a good, good concern. At the time, we made a match, it was already around there, so three point five, right? Correct. The current ridge view is not three point five, that was something more dense. Correct. So we chose at that time not that, that, choosing that, we never said it was a story. All right. All right. Thanks, uh, gentlemen. And I'll leave a few more guys, I'm sorry. Has there been any discussion on, with, with these buildings, if they are approved, that they will be there a long time? And has there been any discussion of installation, or maybe you guys doing another property, charging stations for vehicles in the parking lot? For electric vehicles, correct? Because currently, for, as we, as we proceed, we mentioned that there hasn't been a market rate apartment complex approved in a long time. Right? Going forward, that's something, just my opinion, that's going to be considered progression towards those types of post transportation now coming along. So I was just curious. Any discussion on financial incentives that are going to be required of the town? I think we don't have any, any, any financial incentives for town, something like to get this project across the nation. I haven't heard any discussion on that.
Yeah, so we did talk about that a little bit last meeting, just that we anticipated as the project, what our final form is approved, that there will be a gap. I can't tell you if that's what that gap looks like today. And that will include some discussions about how to, how you fill that gap. So yes, there will be some discussions.
So we're, we're being presented with a second reading, which was essentially, Adam, or Alex correctly, this was the stamp to go ahead. Passed the planning commission, passed first reading council, which was just obviously preliminary, went to planning commission, we've got their recommendations here, positive recommendations. This is the second reading, which would put it all on the full green light, full political motion. It would amend the zoning ordinance of this parcel, maybe develop pursuant to the conditions of the, of the. Yes. Now, as Adam mentioned, they still have to come back and, and do it. Right? That's all staff related. It, it can be, some things have to come back. This was just, a lot of this for all of us here. So we're, we're being asked to approve some of these things, not knowing. We know that there's going to be a financial ask of, of the town, but we don't know how much that is.
We don't have a, we don't have a development to, to design to yet. Some of the tweaks that have been made through this process have changed, uh, some of those expectations of the scope. So it'll be, I can't tell you what it is, because I don't know what I'm going out to bid to design.
Sure. And what's the kind of, what timeline are we looking at on there? Are you guys under any type of required timeline that you're trying to meet, uh, anything of that nature? I know what you would like to do yesterday, but, uh, you know, without going forward with any timelines you're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, which actually, the, the way it is our contract right now, so we can deadline our contract. What we outlined as far as, who would be involved in the, the two year process?
And then my last question is, if this proposal does not go through, uh, are you still committed to upgrading current ridge view regardless of the outcome? So the, you said you already started on the internal improvements, what about the external improvements, all those nice things you were showing? If that all moved on, success of this proposal?
The five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's shared, that's completely independent, that, that's currently happening underway. Putting five or six siding on review, which is a five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is continued on this project.
And those were my questions that I had, just kind of that. All right, thank you for the responses. So here's how we'll do this. Are there any other government and, uh, individuals here that would like to speak? Everyone know who you are? Say your name and your position.
Uh, I'm Jason Stein. I'm a, a very recent appointee to the planning commission. This was actually the first, uh, resolution effort that I was involved with. In going through this, uh, and this is now, we approved the PUD for consideration by the town council. That was us acting as, as the planning commission. As, uh, consistent as a citizen of the town, um, I think the idea of bringing in some dusty housing in the area isn't necessarily a good idea. I like it, I like seeing people come in. The only concerns that I have with that as a citizen would be related to the cost for this. My question during the planning council meeting was what the rates were going to be for these apartments. And as market rates, they're, like, they gave me a little sticker shock. And, uh, my family and I are, are fairly blessed financially, uh, for being able to provide for our family. I know a lot of people in the town so far are having some issues finding affordable housing. But that's my only concern, is if we're going to take up this limited in-town space that we have. Is there going to be no other efforts that we could possibly use for the people that are already struggling? But I do think the idea of utilizing space for this kind of purpose was a good idea, and that was ultimately my, um, I was at that during the planning. And that's all I have on that.
Thank you. One quick comment on that is a good point that Jason raised up. If you do have, you do have building eventually started, myself, I have some income assisted apartments in town, which I know that you have, but, uh, Jason also appreciates. Okay. We're going to open this up to the public. Due to the number of you in here, we may need to limit the time per, but I don't know that we're going to have many, many, uh, issues with that. She's going to have her word here in just a second, but we'll have you guys each come up, say your name, your address, where you're at. And then our developer, the owner back here will be taking down the questions and they'll answer them all again after your questions have been asked. Okay? All right. So my cheap rap for the record. I did speak to the developers last meeting about the, the drive through. That's my concern, the speeding drivers, people are going to think it's an east, north, south. They did work with me on putting some Main Street there, building something into that area to, to slow down the drivers, which I really appreciate and I liked. Um, I also appreciate the fact that I looked at the calls and since it's been taken over, we haven't had here the call volume in that area as we had previously. So it doesn't attest to anything, but it does attest to the new ownership that they are handling, what they need to handle. And our call volume has gone down, which I appreciate that, thank you. That's all I have on that.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and we'll just go by row, okay? We'll start by rows, so we can try to keep it orderly, and we'll start right over here, first row. If anybody here in the first row would like to make a comment or have a question, we'll ask you to come. Yes, man, you can have the microphone, state your name or address, we know who you are, and then you can make your comments or questions.
Okay, my name is Rose, to me, and I live at one oh two West Delaware Street. First house in the public sector, my house goes directly to me and Delaware. So I have a few things, but I don't, I don't take up all the time. But, um, my biggest concern is, the, uh, right now, Main Street is not a freeway to Delaware and, um, to, uh, thirteen. And I like it like that because I, everybody in our area are older people or people with young children. No in-between, either older or you have small children. And they play in our streets because they have never had to worry about retraction. And, uh, I just think it's very dangerous, and I don't think it has to go through. I think that if they're building this, they need to just go that way. They don't need to go through our timber ridge, you know? I mean, plus, I'm not giving the three stories, no rules ridiculous to me, but I'm more concerned about safety. And, uh, I just have a question for the town attorney, and I'll probably say this wrong, but, uh, I want to know what, uh, what, uh, subdivision, regulation, authority you have to build into our timber ridge, because we're not getting anything out of this.
As far as how the.
We're, it's going to be a, it's not going to be a win for us. For people living in timber ridge, this is real.
The authority between the town and the, the group, these, that the streets have.
They can connect streets, but not, how, what authority do you have to connect it, where it's not connected right now, to our timber ridge subdivision? Do you have, you own it? I mean.
Those streets.
Yes. But there's no street there.
But if one's put in, it would connect the streets to the town owned street.
But why do you have to go through? Why can't you just go one way? I mean, you can go right down that way and turn on Michigan, turn on all these others.
And I think that's your question, right there.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Well, I have a lot, but I'm going to have a.
Thank, thank you, Rose. Anyone else here in the front row in this section? All right. We're in front row here. Okay.
My name is Tom Gooding. I, uh, live on one oh six West Carolina. And I'm one of the private systems that's going to be significantly impacted by this development if it's approved. I've got many, many questions. I'm not going to have a time probably to ask you all of them, but one of them, I really don't understand why this building is built. Originally fifty feet tall, now forty-five, when I believe in the young woman that was here last week that represents the construction architectural side. I believe a typical apartment complex has a nine, eight or nine foot interior ceiling height. And you add twelve to sixteen inches for joists and subflooring, et cetera. You probably don't have more than ten, eleven feet per, per floor. So if you've got three floors, you've got more or less thirty, thirty-three feet. I understand you have to get fencing around the HVAC and whatever mechanically out there. Of course, you don't have that in the old complex, where they have all window units. So if you have eleven feet times three, that's thirty-three feet. If I'm correct, I believe I probably am, but she's not here anymore, is she? The woman that represents the architectural side. Then you've got four or five feet for fencing and covering up the HVAC system. You've got roughly thirty-five, thirty-seven feet. Now, where the heck is this extra ten to fifteen feet coming in and why? It's a solid, you know, like hell. Excuse me, when you have about forty-five to fifty feet sitting about seventy or eighty feet in my backyard. And that height of that three stories is almost as tall as the beautiful fifteen trees are going to be ripped down. So those trees are up. And I, I looked at it a little bit over the weekend. You can go out there and do the old high school thing where you measure ten feet, then take the whole pencil and go up. Those trees are sixty, seventy feet tall, and they're all going to be gone. And more or less fifteen of them are going to be ripped out. There'll be a handful of them left by the, uh, the seller's property. See, it's the seller here tonight? Uh, there'll be a few of mine, his property, but I still have a major question on why the height needs to be forty-five feet. Who's here to answer that?
A little bit of that.
I'll answer that.
To Rose's question, the traffic coming up and down Main Street is going to have to be dramatically changed. And there's a lot of young children, right next door to me, there's five little kids, none of which is any taller than this. And they play in the street all the time. The unconnected portion of North Main Street at Carolina, uh, that's going to be extremely dangerous for the. Four guys wondering. So. Obviously, speed limits aren't going to mean, mean anything, because someone wants to haul, but to cut through and go up Delaware thirteen. But you may also want to consider, maybe that's part of what they call bumper stops, but wherever those stops are, they're hurting damaging if you get them going twenty, twenty-five miles an hour. Personally, there's more or less five or six homes are going to be right up against this major change. And, uh, I've heard varying comments about setbacks are supposed to be required. But I sure as hell am going to hate to be able to look out my backyard, which frankly, I get a gorgeous view of all the trees. How far away from my chaming fence is going to be asphalt for a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty-four cars, a hundred and thirty cars? The ten feet, which is ridiculously close in my opinion, would not mean that I have ten feet to run into some smelly asphalt for a hundred and twenty cars. And then have to look at a particularly tall building, which, uh, replaced about fifteen gorgeous trees. It's a shame that we couldn't have found a developer to quantify the property and build maybe sixteen, seventeen homes, whatever, if you built on four acres and it's roughly a, a home, that's approximately sixteen homes. Or the good old city of Fortville, buy and take a nice park out of. But yes, there's an awful lot of people there that, uh. I'm sure have a lot of questions that are equally important or more important than mine, so, uh, I'll turn that over right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
My name is Nick Starter. I live at one oh nine West Carolina Street. I would be just across the street from the proposed development. Most of what I have to say is really more, uh, comments that I hope the town council will consider, rather than questions for the developer. I think that we've had most hard questions answered, uh, already by the developer. But I want to touch on the, the five tenants that they, that they talked about, three of the five. One of which is it, is it consistent with the condition slash character of the, the current structures around it? No, I don't think so. Three stories and forty-five feet, that's, that's massive. I went downtown, um, actually this afternoon. The tallest building in downtown is maybe fourteen feet. It went up to North Main Street. That's right there next to the, um, the entertainment. So why do we need something taller in the middle of a residential area that's taller than, taller than that? As Tom said, you know, three stories, thirty-five feet. In the current review, is a tall two stories. And that's why I said thirty-five feet, it's roughly thirty-five, it may be thirty-six. But still, again, in the middle of a residential neighborhood, forty-five feet, doesn't make sense, middle or out, outside, it just doesn't. Isn't the most desirable use of land? No, I don't, I don't really think so. Again, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are many other ways that we can go about that, including a two-story. There are many other ways that we can go about that, including a two-story development. There is no argument that we need housing. Fortville will definitely benefit from a little bit more housing. But do we have to ruin the feel, the skyline of Fortville for that? Just because the developers are willing to pay Main Street for us? I, I don't think so. Consistent with the current property values? Within the jurisdiction, as the lawyer only pointed out legally, that's what they have to abide by? I, I don't know why the residents really have to suffer for that. You know, they said it's going to take two years. I planned on, you know, selling my house and buying some land just within Fortville. My fiance and I, we love Fortville, thought of moving out of Fortville, made a set. So we're committed to buying land within Fortville, an acre or so, building our own property. But that essentially means that I can't do that for the next two and a half years if this gets through. We were planning on maybe doing that in the next year, year and a half. I did actually have a question. They mentioned that five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is going to be spent on the current Ridge View. That's only about eleven thousand dollars per unit. And then you also mentioned that part of that five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was being spent on the parking lot. So I'm just, it seems a little crazy to me that you can spend eleven thousand dollars at max and completely renovated apartment with granite marble, faux granite marble. They're very nice to account off, they look nice inside. But that seems like a bit of a stretch to be able to do that with that one hundred dollar amount. One last thing I'd like to point out is that two of our five town council members have wonderful businesses downtown. Libby, I know your, your ice cream shop, love it, it's great. I wanted to stay there, I wanted to, to, you know, get busier. Same with Brix's Denver's Pizza. But I think it's a little bit of a conflict of interest that they were to vote on. Just because of the financial interest they were staying to gain from that. I, I think that's just a little unethical in, in my opinion. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to the second row, right back here. Everybody here in the second row? Okay, second row over here. Come on up.
Well, I'm introducing myself. Could we get a slide up of the single family lots? The birds yellow. My name's Sherry Lambert. This is her. And we, my husband and I, he's not here tonight, but he was at the last hearing. We own the property at seven oh six North Main Street, which is the first house next to this. Three-story deal. And of course, we're not happy with it. We have the five grandchildren in that house that Tom was talking about. But first, I just want to say, do you know the song, Take Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot? And a three-story building? But if, if we could get that picture, it'd be yellow. It's got the, yeah, okay, so stay law with the guidelines that we're all talking about. First question is, is it consistent with the character of current structures? As you can see from all the yellow there. A three-story apartment building is not consistent with all the yellow single-family homes. It seems pretty obvious. That's a no on that question. I also want you to remember that the current Ridge View is the exception that, I'm sorry, our four. It was grandfathered in. It should not be repeated because it's the audit. So don't match the audit. And this new building is not consistent, even if you want to make the argument that it's consistent with the current Ridge View. Current Ridge View is only forty-eight apartments on three point five acres. These, this is eighty apartments on three point five acres. And I'm saying three point five acres when you count that the four acre lot part of that's a street, a new street. So you've got almost the same amount of three point five acres, putting eighty on one, the existing is forty-eight. They don't match either. I have a question for the developer. I've driven, I mean, I've seen that current Ridge View for years, but I drove through recently and I'm wondering what is going, there's nothing new on the exterior. None of the buildings have a bush, a flower, nothing. There's the same existing pine trees. So I, there's not, I mean, other than the new sign, which I think looks nice. There's been no upgrades to the exterior. And also the decks look like they're about ready to fall and they have for years. So I'm concerned that those upgrades that they say are being done on the exterior. Okay, the commercial, I have to say, this, the planning commission meeting on June twenty-eighth. They had forgotten, they had talked a lot about the commercial, there were some negative comments. They had forgotten to, to discuss it in their vote. And they said, well, bring it up at the town. But I just want to say, learn from Fishers. Because they have their downtown area. And then they built the Fishers District across the bridge. And now they have two competing restaurant areas. You know, retail areas, and it took away from the downtown. So if you, you know, this could be, you know, Main Street North and Main Street South. And now you're going to take away from the real Main Street downtown. Also, I, I agree with, you know, you look at downtown Fortville. It's two stories except for a couple of buildings. But this, this doesn't even match your downtown. Because it's a lot taller than anything downtown. So it's, it's just, it's not matching the area or the charm of Fortville. Property values. My husband and I have talked to two realtors that believe the property values will go down. I mean, you've got three-story buildings towering over your single-family homes with the parking lots ten feet from our property. And lights and all that. And so, I mean, common sense and two realtors tell you, you're not going to have very many buyers and they're probably not going to pay as much. Okay, I'm sorry. I mean, I just, I, let's see. Yes. I, apartment buildings would be nice, but not locked in the middle of the single-family. And like you said, if I've got the grandchildren there, their bedrooms are right next to this parking lot. With all the lights and all the, the safety issues. So I'll just, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, second row.
Hey, how's it going? My name's Sam Roper, seven oh six North Main Street as well. But obviously, I'm here to say, I think this is crazy that we're even talking about it. You know, it's, the zoning map says, says right there, it's the same as with the master plan. It would be one thing to build two-story apartments in the same style as what exists, but this is going to be an eyesore. It's going to stick out. It doesn't matter whether we lower it from fifty feet to forty-five feet, but they put five feet of fencing on it to, to maybe lower the roof height. These are single-family homes. Is there a satellite?
Question.
I do. Why, why would we deviate so far from our existing requirements, specifically the, the number of units per acre? I mean, right now, this development would require more than twice what it has. Is there something specific that we're benefiting from for this development? That I'm not seeing and nobody else has ever seen? Because why would we deviate from something we already agreed on? This is how we're going to run this town. But never. You know, again, safe issues with the kids. And I just, I don't understand. I just don't even understand how I got to this, how the past planning, how the past course or effort, y'all. You know, it's a law, it's certainly not consistent with responsible growth of development for this area. If Fortville wants to grow, annex, annex up thirteen. You know, there's plenty of money incorporated Madison County to go to. Whether you work in Hancock or Madison. But this is not the answer. Regardless of, you know, what financial benefits. It will become a cutthroat for Main Street, just like a lot of the other areas have. You know, I, my one question to the developer was, was it reduced from fifty feet to forty-five feet? But the forty-five feet doesn't include the fencing for the AC units? It's included at the forty-five feet? Okay. Yeah, I just, that's it. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks. I need you to come up.
I will, I want to show you. My name is David Hammond. I live at seven oh five North Main Street. This is my property right here. This is where I live. This one. This is going to go right up to my border. And I know you can hear me, I'm an old Army Sergeant Combat Veteran. A member of the American Legion and an officer of the Department of Foreign War of the State. So my concern is my quality of life these two years that this construction's going on. Not only the noise, but the dust and the dirt that's going to be coming on my property. So my quality of life will diminish, it will diminish drastically in these two years. Next thing is the property value, like they brought up already. It, it will go down in the next one. So my, my concern is, how am I going to be compensated for my, the quality of my life? Going down, living right there next to all this that's going to be going on. I'm with the gentleman earlier. Why can't Fortville make this a part? Because we do got new apartments going on, going in up there off thirteen right now. So there's, there's three sets of apartments so far in Fortville already. The ones right there behind me, Ridge View. The ones that's up on Delaware are just a little bit farther north than that. And then the new ones you're building on thirteen. Not only will it, we can't park in Fortville that. I mean, that's why I came to Fortville, because it was small-town USA. I mean, if we're trying to make this a Carmel or a Fishers, then I, I don't want to be no part of this. You know, that's why, that's the charm of Fortville. And, and like I said, you can't park downtown now. And then all this construction and the more traffic's going to be coming through with the little kids. I got two teenagers that live with me too, that like, she sat right there on that lot and played out in that pool. Dead end right there. That's all goes away for me. So this is affecting my quality. So I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. I remember the third row back here.
My name's Lauren Kelly. I live at two ten East Carolina. We just moved here in January and part of the whole reason that we really wanted to come to Fortville and what drew us in was that small-town feel. Everybody knows their neighbor, we all hang out. But you're still close enough to what you need to be close to. So I have a central daughter. There's a whole gang of children, anybody on Carolina and Maine can testify to this, that run that lot. On bikes, running around. So it makes me concerned for the safety of my child and the children in our neighborhood. You know, when we moved here, I thought to myself, wow, this is the kind of neighborhood that I feel comfortable just letting my kid go and play down with neighbors, with the other kids. And, you know, something that was interesting to me is, I don't know if we could go to the slide where it was a double star item at the bottom that said, this is assuming that each working adult that is coming into these apartments is making at least sixty thousand dollars a year or more. I don't know if anybody else is familiar with the state of our economy, but those jobs are getting harder and harder to come by. So realistically speaking, I guess I don't know how expensive these apartments are going to be. But I, I just don't understand. Three stories surrounded by single-family homes. I don't know duplexes or, you know, the side-by-side duplexes that would just kind of match what I feel like Fortville is. You know, our property is not directly going to be affected necessarily as in, we're going to be right on the building. But we're just on the other side of the screen. So the construction, I know in retrospect, if I would have come to look at our home and seen massive apartment buildings being built, that would have been something in my mind like, I don't know anymore. I think I'm just as confused as everybody else. And a lot of the people in this room have probably lived here a lot longer than we have, so are even more disappointed to see this go up. I'm all about bringing in new people and expansion and, and, you know, letting the economics of the town thrive. I just don't think this is the way to go about it by any means. I mean, if we can find people who make sixty thousand dollars or more a year to come and spend their money here, that's great. I just don't know how realistic that is. The whole thing, I just don't know how realistic it is. As a parent, I would much rather see the space used as something like a park or a splash pad or, you know, somewhere we can, we can gather. But this is just, I'm concerned about the type of people this will attract. And then what in turn that will bring into the community, especially in our neighborhood. People already fly down Carolina as is. So, you know, to create this throughput, I think it's just going to make it worse. You can post a statement all you want, but people are negligent and careless. So I don't have any questions. That was just more kind of how I feel as someone who just moved here and as a young parent. So that's all I have.
My name's John. We're primarily in Fortville, we're two eighteen East Carolina Street. And I am also as well confused with the town council with the previous type of multi-unit living space. Doesn't match the neighborhood. I can't pronounce it, it's a D. Washington State County. And land areas, the microeconomic buys. This is quite loud, suddenly. That's the biggest concern. How long does the traffic flow? You open that road out, I don't know, I don't have a problem telling people to slow down. There's things to consider. This neighborhood. As the best, I will put it there. I mean, there's plenty of tracks. We can make a lot more money than that. I'm just totally confused. I don't really understand why the town council would do this. That's all my concern.
My name is Cindy Green. And I just want to reiterate so much of what Fortville crap that's being done that you are proposing to us, this crap? I've been here for more than ten, twelve years. And, and I'm a two-story apartment lot. You're taken by a street wall. You know, guests are more than kids, but you know, I'm, I'm still relatively young. But I can't afford to live in that street. I'm going to have to leave. In, in I just want to leave. One other question.
Bring it over to the third row on this side over here.
I'm Linda Marie Hanson. I'm the coroner of Maine and Michigan. I have extreme problems with the traffic. The result from all those minutes. Regardless of how many parking spaces you put. We'll have two hundred or plus cars added to my we'll have two hundred or plus cars added to my little one block of Main Street, which right now is a dead end. Dead ends at that property. That piece of Main Street can't tolerate that much more traffic. Besides running over our children. We don't have curbs. We don't have consistent sidewalks on our block. So, one of my disappointments, as this other lady mentioned, is I don't hear any commitment from the town. I did hear last week at the P C A from the developers, they flat out said, you know, our limit is that black line property. So the developers aren't gonna do anything about it. But we need law enforcement, we need the town to address Main Street. Between my house one oh one west and my neighbor's house one oh one east on the other side of Maine and Michigan. Road's not wide enough. So you're already going to be going through eminent domain to steal from me whatever land you can. And from my neighbor, but there's a limit to how much you can take. Then you put a hundred and eighty, or I'm sorry, eighty units, hundred and sixty potential car drivers, minus whatever for teenage kids or plus whatever. Eventually, they're gonna be screening. Well, we need a left turn lane. We need a right turn lane. They're going to have to drive right through my living room. They're just, the road isn't wide enough. That does need to be addressed. Last week I said, at least give us a traffic signal light. That will help control egress. You don't have a fighting chance on Michigan in the mornings when you're trying to go to work. If you're coming south on Main Street and you hit Michigan, you could sit there for a long time. You're gonna get angrier and angrier. You're gonna be tooting your horn and revving your motors and becoming an agitated person. There are a couple of proposals that could help alleviate some of this. And I feel bad for the ladies who would like this to remain a dead end. But that's needed because some of these residents will need to get to thirteen. And it makes much better sense for them to just escape to thirteen than to come down here right by my house and then drive the distance of Michigan to get to thirteen. Sorry, but you need that. You need this, which I did see on their drawings. What's wrong with cutting over here for the third or so of the traffic from those apartments? That every day will want to go to Southeast Boulevard, whatever it's called, Park Place. So this, 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 that will help alleviate what's coming down to Maine and Michigan. And Maine and Michigan will never have left turn lane, right turn lane. Unless you tear down my hundred and six-year-old house. That would be right.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Brian Toronto. I live at seven one seven Alden Drive. It's over at Elfris, so I'm not directly affected by this development. But I'm just concerned that the town council is looking at taking this direction in development. I moved here three years ago. Previously, I've been living in a huge apartment complex over by Noblesville. Across the street from Deer Creek. And that is a great place, I feel, for a parking complex of that sort. I definitely have lived in places like that for years. And society needs that. But I moved here when I had a couple of kids and was looking for a new town. And, you know, there's be a permit, my kids deal with that side, playing yard, not worry about, you know, cars racing through the neighborhood. And I can tell you, having lived in a parking complex for years, that you're gonna have a lot of people. This is a huge development, especially for town size. And that's gonna result in a huge increase in traffic. And a lot of people don't have this. And they're not really worried about the people in the area around that. So, yeah. Yeah, it's, I would feel fine if this were going outside of town. But I really feel the pain to people and neighbors around here because they, they're gonna be usually impacted by this. And I would be very concerned, we're probably looking with, if a hundred and twenty first unit complex was going in back, back my street. That's all I'm saying.
Fourth row over here.
Those two North Main Street, across the street from Lambert's and also from Mr. Hammond. My wife and I are official owners in Timber Ridge. Nineteen ninety-five. We opposed the Ridgeview apartments when they first proposed those. But because it was a grandfather clause, they were allowed to build. In two thousand two, they talked about putting Main Street through. At that time, the real apartments talked about changing Main Street. And I went to the planning commission meeting in Hancock in Greenfield, Matt. And Mr. Farrell, who owned the property at that time and the apartments, and the town could not agree on who was gonna pay for the street. And they got into an argument meeting and that was into that discussion. I didn't have to worry about it. But at that time, I had a son that was seven and a daughter that was five. And as everybody else has expressed, I was concerned about traffic. It's a four-way stop, technically a three-way stop because it's a dead end. Nobody stops. I mean, well, not saying nobody. A lot of people run that stop sign. I complained to the town and gee, I appreciate it. They would send the police out, they would park and wait. And then, of course, you know, pretty open, so they'd see the police and everybody made their stop and then went on their way and the police couldn't stay there, you know. But routinely, people run that stop sign. And as you've heard, there are numerous children up and down that street. And they should be allowed to have fun and ride the bikes and in the street and play. And not have to worry about somebody in a hurry and running that stop sign. So, my concern even more than the buildings itself is the traffic. And the speed that people drive through that area. So, it's been brought up before and many people have said, you know, it's an iPod. So I just wanted to say that I have that same concern.
Anybody else in the fourth row back here? No? Oh, bye. Alright, here Robert. Yes?
Is the developer gonna address?
Yes.
I know there were the rental rates that some were asking about.
Okay, can when they come up.
Because they, they mentioned them in the planning commission, so I wasn't sure if those got asked.
Alright, against the wall. Nobody? Against the wall over here on this side?
Hello, I'm Matt Elder and I live at one oh six East Caroline Street. So, so I'm, so I'm, I have a concern about the impact of adding this amount of people. Or, because I got a letter from Fortville Water Works asking us to only water your lawn twice a year, twice a week. And no more than that. And I'm concerned about how adding a hundred fifty people, how that's gonna stress the, the, of the water system of Fortville. And I'm also concerned about the height of buildings. In twenty twenty, I invested in solar panels back in my house. And I don't know if this is gonna cast a shadow back in my house.
Thank you. Anyone else along the back wall?
Hi, my name's Cap. Now again, I built my home at one fourteen West Carolina Street twenty-six years ago. I chose Fortville like probably ninety-nine and a half, ninety-nine point nine percent of the people who chose Fortville for the small town that it is. And was at the time. I don't have anything prepared. It's really just, what I want to express is just reiterate what everyone here has said and the feeling that we're getting. This does not fit with the area. Aesthetically, somebody said, why would you plop this down in the middle of a hundred-year-old homes? No, it doesn't fit with the area at all. Just aesthetically speaking. A modern, and I read somewhere that it was a modern feel, an urban feel. Well, guess what? Fortville isn't an urban area unless there is some kind of, you know, intent to change it to that and tear down all of Fortville. Because it's all hundred-year-old homes except for Timber Ridge. And make it, you know, an urban feel like they did when they destroyed downtown Fishers. So I just, I just wanted to support everybody here that has spoken about this. And, you know, I moved, when I moved in and built my home, my daughter was eight years old. And it was a, it was a wonderful place. I live in the end of that cul-de-sac, so it's not directly behind me. But, I mean, the kids down there have, for twenty-six years, played in that street. And, you know, now I'm looking at retirement and it's still a beautiful place to live, but it won't be. And, and I want to, you know, continue living in my home. But I'm guessing that all those people along at least my side of the street won't. And when we go to sell our homes with that construction and that, and those apartments behind us, our property values are automatically gonna move down. I don't care what anybody says about that or any statistics or numbers that anybody shows me. It's common sense. They're gonna go down. It's just common sense. And this is nonsense. There is no common sense to this at all. So I don't have a question. I just felt like listening to all my peers here. I want you to know, there's a small sample of Fortville. But everybody that moved to Fortville moved here for the small town of Fortville, not for crap like this. Thank you.
Through everybody. I'll thank everybody for their patience and allowing everybody to speak. I really appreciate that very much. Okay. Next steps. Now let's, can I say anything before we have them come back up? You guys want them to come back up? That's what's, next question you have.
I'll start with a couple of overarching kind of responses to a lot of the comments. I'll start by saying that, first of all, traffic concerns that we heard today. Two-fold. One is opening this development north to south period. So I heard a lot of concerns about that going through. And then I heard about volume from this development. There will be no development on this property. I can't imagine a scenario when there is development on this property that does not include connection from north to south. So, so that's not an if question from my perspective. That's a when question. And, and I think that that's important to remember. I think it's a reality that to have residential development here, this is residential development here. You have to connect to these two locations because you're gonna need two points of access, safety purposes, and just the reality of how development will occur. This anticipates, look at your historic development of your community and the way that your roads laid out. This is a natural logical progression of the grid system that exists in this portion of the city, from town. I think that's important as you look through what, what future development looks like. It's another reason why I think this isn't when question. I heard a lot of folks talk about what you've built in Fortville. As a guy who lives in Fort Bend, it's been the last ten years on redevelopment work. And to the Harrisville Reuse Authority, trying to build a community, you have done what we are trying to do there, which is create a place. Downtown, I spent, I have two of your restaurants on Saturday. You've done it. I've now heard a lot of people say, well, we got it. Don't let anybody else come. And that's, that's, if you are allowing future residential development to occur. Allowing future residents, we don't have multiple places to get across. There's not a market rate development. It's available with one, two, and three bedrooms that are here. So, so that's missed. I haven't heard anybody say that you don't have the need for market rate multifamily. They don't want to care, but I haven't heard anybody say that you don't have it. I prefer to suggest about annex. One of the things that you gotta consider is, is that responsible growth and development? I will say that I believe annexation is the opposite. In the instance of responsible growth and development, we have infill development. Go somewhere else. Don't come here. This is an infill opportunity. The reasons we stated at the beginning, we believe this is appropriate infill. We do have on the site plan that's shown, there are approximately one hundred and forty-three parking spots shown. So there are opportunities to reconfigure that parking. That will go through, as we go through the permitting process, the review process, that will happen. That could include parking not being so close to neighbors to the north. That's an opportunity to eliminate some of those parking spots to create green space between them. But currently, proposed setback is ten feet. Which is the same as an R three. So single-family development could come in and have a structure within ten feet of that or other property. We have a fifty-foot building setback coming, but in the order, so no buildings will be within the fifty-foot setback. And the height actually, on the shorter section of a two-story is approximately, I'm sorry, it's approximately thirty feet from, from the start of the building. And the longer, it's approximately seventy-four. So you have fifty-foot plus additional building setback before you get to the three-story. Again, done purposefully, don't attempt to be mindful of what is adjacent to these properties. It's called an oddity. It's called a lot of things in the last meeting, oddity, grandfather. Don't consider that. You can't disregard what exists. If it's there, it's part of your community, grandfather, oddity, it's there. Something's going to go adjacent to this, this existing development. Single family, hold that family. Something can, will go there. We think this is the appropriate opportunity to expand that existing. There's a question related to solar panels. A gentleman who lives immediately to the north. The eastern building, north boundary is set approximately where the northeast building, northwest building is today. So I think if he doesn't get current, there's no shadows currently from that, that would be approximately the same distance from that. I don't, I don't think scientific evidence provides to you, but I think just looking at Google Maps, looking at how the shadows are on there. I don't think it affects this existing solar. Why is the height necessary? That was a question that I was asking. I do want to clarify, I appreciate the question. This is forty-five feet. That includes screening. It's not forty-five feet plus anything. And that's what we needed to confirm before we go on fire. So this is forty-five feet to row one. Why is the height necessary? Height's necessary apart to create roof lines, to create aesthetically operated development here. That's part of what's necessary, including additionally, to create the site, to drain, there isn't a structure necessary to do that. That's part of what creates that necessity for forty-five feet. In the last. There's a couple of questions. One, related to rental rates. We'll give those in just a second. I'll remind you that rates given are a twenty twenty-five rate for the new development. So you've had rent growth moving across market that's got double-digit over the last year. If you're factoring in today's rates plus winter, and it exists at that time. Also talk about progress on exterior improvements.
So, yeah, to address rental rates, so the expected rates for the property for in twenty twenty-five, be a one-bedroom. to be a one-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, fifteen-hundred, two-bedroom, two-bath, eighteen-hundred. That's, really honestly lacks behind a lot of the rent growth we're seeing right now. Rents are just really set based off of market rates. That's the expectation of the rent. As far as, you know, it was mentioned that, that someone hasn't seen much improvement to, to review. I can tell you that the landscape, every tree on property, including trimming out the undergrowth and shaping every pine tree on property. We've, we've got dumpster surrounds in the exterior. We're currently putting in the gazebo. It's sitting here at rail stations. And the plan is actually to landscape where we've taken smaller bushes out from the property and actually landscape around it. Just to summarize it, so it's, it's in process. But, you know, then I think somebody else mentioned just about the budget. You know, I, I've been developing, I've been in real estate for eight years now. Got a lot of experience with what it takes to do it. This budget is what it takes to do it based on actual experience. And I can tell you that the one, one place where you got me is that actually parking lot wasn't what we contemplated, but we realized the condition of parking lot is not hobbles, etc., so we decided to come out of additional pocket to keep parking lot. Now, it's twenty thousand dollars. That on your.
I think, I think you're trying to address, you believe we left on the answer.
I did have a follow-up. I heard one of the folks come up and say, regarding a slide, referring to some income. I thought I saw, I think she said sixty thousand. I think I saw seventy-five thousand. That, that wasn't per person, was it? Was that household? That's the way I.
House, sixty thousand a house.
Yeah, that's what I put there. I just wanted to make sure.
So it's a sixty thousand household?
We have that clarification, correct? Okay.
We have last, a question or two.
Entertained a few questions, and we've got more on the agenda, okay, after these. So we'll take it, we'll take a few questions, sir.
I still don't understand what the necessity is if the interior of a typical apartment has an eight-to-nine foot ceiling. Why you need forty-five? I understand five-foot fencing for H D A C. But if you take that ten-foot with the two-by-tens or two-by-four and the subflooring, you only have roughly ten or eleven feet. On these two stories, leaves approximately a twenty-two foot, and then of course you have four or five feet for the H D A C. Subsequently, a three-foot story, a three, three-four story, would be roughly thirty-three feet plus a five-foot fencing for the H D A C. Where are we coming with the forty? I know you reduced from fifty to forty-five, but why even forty-five?
So, my name is Joy Skidmore. I want to go sort of real estate purposes and. Get us to this point. So I, I, we heard the concern, right, and so we tossed our architect who was here at the planning commission and said, how low can you go? Like, we need to, we need to reduce this. And she got us down to forty-three foot six inches, just conceptually. We want the building to be as low as possible too, because the lower the building, the less it costs, the better the project, right, more economical. So we're trying to get the building as low as possible, so we all, we all have the same goal as far as that goes. We need to have a three stories for the density, for the project number, and feasibility work. But we're working to get that as low as possible as well. So we left it at forty-five because we're not at construction documents yet. She did say probably forty-three foot six inches will be good enough, but we left it at forty-five just to give us that little bit of extra room in case you can see the top of an H D A C. So we did ask our architect, and she took a really hard look at it.
She's lying hard.
Okay. Yeah, I would ask the developer, like, what other apartments do you, other than the ridge?
What else have you developed and actually built?
So we, we own apartments all over the state. Several properties. As far as what, what we've actually built, we've built some single-family homes, some townhouses.
Wait, and apartments of this scale?
I personally have not. Joy, on the other hand, who is leading that phase of it, has been in development.
You don't have to say. Probably over twenty-one years, yeah. So working on development projects such as this, actually much, much bigger projects than this. So looking at your website, it just shows that you own one apartment building in Melford Park. Are you on more than that?
I do.
Apartments are not a.
Yes.
Hey, could I make one other, just a quick comment? I spoke to someone in zoning a couple of years ago who talked about extending the history. They wanted to see single-family homes. And that's what I thought was the plan. So this is different than what the city had wanted.
All right, thank you. Any last, one, pick one more question, comment? Okay. All right, so this is back to council. Thank you for everybody. Thank you guys for your, your answers. All right. Still with us? Questions, comments from the council?
If you guys don't know me, I'm a lifetime resident of this town. I've been here, with exception, about seven years. I've lived here my whole life. And I lived in Timber Ridge. I built a home out there in nineteen ninety-nine, and I sold it in two thousand nineteen. So I am familiar with traffic in the area, which is, the, the concern I have is with all you that speak about your kids playing in the street. I, I just, I don't know why you would ever do that anyway. Even growing up here when this town was not busy, we didn't play in the streets. You know, I mean, that's just dangerous anyway. So when I lived in Timber Ridge, we didn't have kids playing in the street, on our street, but there were plenty of kids playing in other areas, and it is dangerous. But I don't think that's a traffic concern more than it is watching what your kids are doing. Because, and teach them not to play in the street and not ride their bikes in the street, because we didn't. We rode on sidewalks. We didn't play in the street.
I believe legally you can't ride a bike on a sidewalk.
Well, okay, that might be said. Well, we have bike paths now.
Is there really a difference you want to make?
I understand that. I'm just saying that I live, I live in that subdivision. It's dark. It has always been dark. I always complained about it being dark.
There's a light right on the corner.
Yeah. But it was never, there was never an HOA that was there to say that you had to have a lighted post out in your front yard or, and houses were dark. So it is very dark. It always has been, which, which makes it dangerous. I mean, I lived on almost a curve, so it was, it was a dangerous place to be. But I, I understand that the amount of kids that are in the area too, and, and plus, Timber Ridge is south by very many apartments in the town. Okay, so when it was built, there was still, you have Ridgeview, you've got the ones on Bearport. I mean, then the biggest majority of the properties that south that subdivision are apartment complexes.
Two stories or shorter.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have a problem with the height.
Because you don't live right there.
No. Because there was a project that was, put the forest on sixty-seven that became two-story and three-story.
Yeah, or.
And I was not in favor of that. I'm in favor of.
When was that? What year?
Just, was it nineteen? It was right, right, the year bracket for, so it's two thousand nineteen.
Were you still living in Timber Ridge?
No, she was in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, yeah. I think someone has to two thousand nineteen.
You know how that seems to us, right?
Especially after she's calling me a shitty parent.
Hey, I did not say that. I did not say that. I just said that.
We're not, we're not gonna do it like this, okay?
I just, I'm just gonna give you my take on, I mean, I'm, I'm here to, that's why I got involved in this, because I lived here my whole life. My, my dad was born here. I want the town to grow responsibly. That's why I decided to do this. And I think it is. I'm just, I'm a little bit emotional because my dad's gone, so. So, yeah, the apartments, I, I understand the concern backing up to the property. I get all that, but it's been there. And most of the people have moved in there since they were there. There are a few that have not. So the, the Ridgeview apartments were already existing when you guys got there. So it was, and that property is basically landlocked almost. And that room, when they'd never been put in that way, it was never intended to be continued on in, in Timber Ridge. They would never put, and, and there's another on School Street. Or, and that's what I wanted to ask them too, because you guys were intending on opening that up in Ridgeview as well. Where it dead ends, you know?
Yeah, I, I'd say we're, we're happy to talk with the town about which way.
That's just another access, another access point. But a lot of your traffic's gonna come from people in the neighborhood. It's not people from all over town or the apartments. You have people, and you talk about steam. I mean, my room, when I lived in Timber Ridge, is a drag strip, you know? And if I tried to back out of my driveway, I almost got hit every day in the morning when I left. It was the neighbors, it was the people in the subdivision, not the people in town, that were doing that. So, you know, you can look at it either way. I mean, I, since I have experience living in that neighborhood, I, I, I have a very good idea of how the traffic runs in there. And I don't know, you can't determine when these people are gonna leave their apartments. You don't know if they're all gonna go at the same time of the day, and they're all gonna go a different direction. The idea about putting an insurance through that property owner on the two-thirty-eight, it's dangerous to put an insurance on a curb. I would never do that. I mean, I think that's a bad, bad idea. So, that's all I can say.
Okay.
I appreciate the fact that you think that I should have stayed from voting. I too moved to this town because I absolutely fell in love with it. My husband felt like crazy. I do own a business. I own two businesses on Main Street. I want to be on town council because I want to protect our Main Street, protect the integrity that, that it had and has. We've got to clean it up, right? We've got to be able to afford new sidewalks and. I appreciate having people come in. Those people love coming to festival or farm work. They're coming in from out of town. I'm gonna struggle with what you said, but I'm gonna consider what you're, what you said because I respect it. This is a really hard place for all of us to be because we're your neighbors and we, we do value this town. And trust me when I say we are listening to every word you're saying. The hard part is, I don't get to see that very often. And I think it's hard for others to understand the depth behind us to help our town stay affordable, to help it stay healthy, to help it, help people want to come and live here. There's a lot of expense, and we need people to be able to afford roads and sidewalks and lighting and schools. And this is part of it. And I've grown up in communities, Murray and Kessler, downtown Indianapolis area. Very diverse. We had forty-foot homes. We had single-story homes. We had renters. We had all renters. It was very diverse. So to me, this is attractive because it just brings in more people that can enjoy our community. I appreciated the design of it being lower on the ends next to homes. I thought that was very thoughtful, thought out. If homes are going to be built there versus apartments, they would look like the ends caps of apartments. Main Street originally had three, I don't know if there was a four-story. Most of them blew up because of the boilers and stuff. So I think originally that's what our Main Street did have. But I do hear you. And my concern mostly is about safety, sidewalks, accessibility for everyone to get around safely, and the lighting. Because I care more than anything.
Hopefully there'll be an ice cream store in the retail space. Or a little wine.
I, I sympathize with you in the traffic, because we live in Merrill Street. I believe you made, the traffic is terrible. And we have three hundred and fifty homes going behind us, and we're not crazy about that either. But the only option we had was to try to have Bill to stop it. The town does have to grow. We do need, we need the people. We need the tax base to be able to afford. And I don't think this is a bad plan. You know, I understand you don't want the traffic. Nobody does, but nobody wants their property to change. But changes are coming to Fortville. You don't have that much time to grow anyway. I mean, we're, you know, when you talk about Fishers and Carmel, we are nothing like that. That was a, that was a farm town. There was nothing there. I mean, it was wide open space. And when we have a built community here that has, there isn't hardly any infill lots left here. I mean, that's one of the few ones that's here that's been landlocked for a while. You know, I mean, if that property owner got rid of it, it was gonna go. You know, so we don't have the opportunity to grow like Fishers and Carmel. That's never gonna happen. I know everybody likes to think that's what's happening here, but it's not. And that's why we're here, is to make sure it doesn't. We really have one direction to go, which is south, unless we try to fight out, you know, like Madison County. We're not, that's not the intent here. We don't need that. And our, our infrastructure is growing as this stuff comes, and that's the only way you can do this. You cannot say in the future, you want to do all this stuff and do it now, because one, there's no money. And two, you have to have the, you have to have the foot traffic and the, and the head count wanted to do that stuff. The law does not allow you to do anything but that. So it's, you know, the growth has to be there to have, the water supply is fine. We're not in danger of, of drowning out here. But, I mean, it's, you know, everybody at this time of year has to conserve. It's something that people should do anyway. I mean, I got online and said this the other day because I do, I'm guilty of it myself, not being conservative with water use sometimes. And we have the best water in, in, I don't know, five counties at least, every county that touches us. Our water is, maybe a few people don't know, your water is soft when it gets to your house. You know, it's not anywhere else. And our water rates are, are less than any, anybody else. You know, so we're in control of that now. So we need to, you know, our waters move, ask for, out of the county. You know, these, and these subdivisions that are on the outside of town, some of them aren't even in our town. And I think people consider that they're part of our town, and they're not. They're Fishers. But they are using our water, and they pay yearly to use it. So, you know.
I'll, I'll start by saying, first off, the report you have here came out, some of you have already left. So I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate that. I commend everybody for their respect and everybody else's. That means a lot. So thank you for that. I have, I have a lot of, I have a lot of things to think about this. I live in a house that's on that map right there. I live on Main Street. I live in a house that's on that map right there. And as far as the project being near my home, that doesn't bother me, because being near my home, that's not my concern. I think the project is good looking. I have concerns about the height. I have concerns about the height. I think that the exterior, I think it looks nice. My concerns are, I can remember when Ridgeview was put in there. I thought it was an odd place to plop that down in there, and I still think it's an odd place to put it down in there. And, I'm getting ahead of myself. My vision, Main Street's gonna go through at some point. Always, I think everybody could probably, whether you like it or not, could probably agree, that's why it was made that way. It's gonna go through at some point when the right project came along, okay? My vision, and I'm, again, I'm just one person up here. My vision of Main Street is a continuation of the Main Street that's already there from the business district all the way north. So if you come to the four-way stop at Linda Marie's house, you know, the homes.
It's not a four-way.
Well, that's correct. Four, four-way intersection, I meant to say, correct. I walk through there virtually every day, virtually every day. And so I, I think that the natural progression of that would be awesome with single-family, Adam, forgive me. I don't know the technical name for it, but Main Street style homes, not, not suburban development subdivision homes. Not that there's anything wrong with those. I live in one of those. But, you know, some that look like those nice traditional Main Street homes that we're all proud of. I live in one of those, but you know, some that look like those nice traditional Main Street homes that we're all proud of, even though we may not live in them now, they, that's, they're on Main Street, right? And that's one of the things we're proud of, with Main Street. I see that as a progression, not coming up Main Street and bam, being hit with even if it's a two-story, three-story structure that doesn't fit there. We had a similar but different structure proposed for Broadway just a couple of years ago, some of you were on this council, that we rejected for some of the very same concerns, and that was on Broadway, of all things, not right here. And so I, that's, that's my initial concerns about it, I have no problem with and I'm not the property owner, obviously, they can try to determine who the best seller or best buyer is, that's completely their right to do. But, you know, a custom home builder come up there and Main Street would go through, again, that would not, that would still have a traffic issue. And I agree with Tanya, the traffic issue is going to come from the neighbors of Timber Ridge, because it's the most convenient way to come through. Right? It's the most convenient way to come through. I also think it would be, you know, it's going to increase some traffic on Delaware as well. Going up and cut over to thirteen, that's not my reason for saying no to this, that's going to happen, I don't think it'd be as drastic as what the initial fears are, because it typically never really is, they're valid fears, but it doesn't usually play out to be as bad as what the fear is. And yet, my vision is Main Street extended, whenever that may be, maybe it never happens. But traditional Main Street homes, front porches, things like that, there's a place for this apartment complex, it looks nice. There is a drastic need, for those that may not know, for market-rate apartments in Fort Bel. That's the only part of me that regrets, kind of how I feel, I cannot support this project. There's places, other places, hopefully, that will come online for these types of projects, but I like what it looks like, just not right there. I think that somebody said it, I don't believe that. But Ridgeview, back to my original point, I thought it was just kind of put there, again, it was allowed, there wasn't anything funny about it going there, it's allowed, it's built to use. I would rather see an extension of traditional Main Street homes rather than an extension of apartment complexes that are there. Again, if that exists, complexes, we need them, we need them badly, I just don't think right there is the appropriate place for it. And then I guess my icing on the cake is, and I understand what you're saying, which you don't know how much that dollar amount is going to be. You're asking this Town Council to approve this with the knowledge that there's going to be an ask of the town for taxpayer money, and we don't know how much that is. And that's kind of my, always been my go-to, kind of my role on this council that I've built, is the budget impact. And we're thinking about approving this tonight, again, I know it's my first step, but we don't know what that dollar ask of the town is going to be. And who knows, that may be coming, it may come to you guys, and it may be an X-dollar amount, and the town can't do that, and maybe it doesn't, maybe the project goes way down. There's still a lot of obstacles and hurdles, and everybody doesn't understand, for this to get across the finish line. I, for one, just want to make it known, I try to be clear, and I ask a lot of questions all the time. Up gas, go to the grocery store, I get asked questions on my morning walks, I get asked questions. I just want everyone to know where I stand on this. I think it's, I think that there's been a lot of homework done, I respect that they've done that, and I like what it looks like, it's not here. That's what, that's what I've got to say about it.
Good, we've read that.
Okay, Alex, next steps would be motion. You guys know where I stand, what my motion is going to be, so if somebody else wants to make it, you're welcome.
So we can understand this, this is just to rezone it to a PBD, right?
Correct. As certified by the planning commission. So you can accept that tonight, which means that it would take effect. You also do nothing in the not being approved of it, if you don't actually have something happen. Libby, in case you have any concerns about the conflict with the interest. Without getting into the weeds, that is a very specifically defined legal term. You do not have a legal conflict with the interest or something that would, that may exist, meaning that owner. But as far as participating in voting on this issue, you don't have the type of in either of these.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance number twenty-two sixty regarding the rezon for Ridgeview West PD.
You got the first? You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May?
May.
So, Libby, you say name? Right, so we have a two-two, which typically goes into a tiebreaker to the court treasurer, which court treasurer is absent. And Fritz is, has left, he couldn't hear. So Alex, just for everyone in attendance, what's the next step on this?
Motion fails if no final action by the council.
So.
What does that mean?
So, yes, I'd say table it, give the court treasurer here.
Or does he go back to the planning commission?
So, we have a split vote, and court treasurer typically, I point down there, because court treasurer usually sitting there. Court treasurer is absent, place tied, so this would be, so they're more likely to come, place on the next agenda?
It should stay.
Yeah, so it will be on the next council agenda next week. And could we vote for another vote? If it doesn't, likely will, right? Our council president will likely be here, I would think, and our court treasurer hopefully would be here as well, so. I think that you should, someone should. I'll make a motion to table this to the next council meeting. You got first and second? All opposed, or I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, thank you guys for everybody's patience, we'll get everybody, thank you guys for coming. You're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the council meeting. I'll give it a minute for eight minutes, I'm going to leave, so go ahead. We're going to go ahead and continue. We have all kinds of fun still on the agenda, for those that are interested in staying. We're still in old business, four C, Bob Farrell's address to council regarding property driveway on Walnut Street. Bob, thanks for everybody coming, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. I'm Bob Farrell. Thinking about today, but my day from the order of four down East Broadway, I've asked the down at Fort Bel to fund a project to remove the four-and-a-half-inch roll curve that was placed there in December of twenty eighteen. I've asked them now to replace it with the depressed curve that I had. You couldn't even tell you were driving across anything now. You know, I brought wooden blocks in and videos and pictures and testimony and all of that, so y'all have heard everything. Has there been a determination as to whether or not there is a county code permitting four-and-a-half-inch curves as entrance? That was the one thing that I had asked, that you would find that out.
Bob's asking if there was a certain, if we ever looked in research whether or not there was a county code that allowed four-and-a-half-inch curve.
Twenty eighteen. Going by county.
This right here. Twenty sixteen dash ten A. This is through the building standards, it was dropped back on two thousand and sixteen.
Does that specify that four-and-a-half-inch curve are allowed?
Four-inch.
Much more than that.
The part that we replaced, that you're complaining about, is four-inch. Did you get the figures, Fritz sent you, or you went over measured? The four-and-a-half-inch you're talking about, is part of the existing curve that was pulled out. So everything we come back in and replace is put back in.
But all of my entries, Joe, is south of your new drain. So that had to be, that was standard curve.
Obviously, your drive wasn't as wide back then.
Okay, all I'm saying is that I had a depressed curve, and now I don't. And we can explain away what was and what wasn't there, but the fact remains, I don't have one. I know you got, you got to peruse all of it, you got to peruse all of it. And I will, I will look this over, but here's a possibility, we can make this meeting go as quickly if you agree. This is a proposed motion to deny or allow my request. And I think that's, that's how we're going to get to the next step. I'm not aware of what this document says, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, so we're asking basically, as what Fritz here, for the town to remove the current roll curve and put in the depressed access that we discussed many times, at our cost. And be available, that's what this is asking for.
It gives you, yes, it gives you the right to, that is a motion that you can rule on. You either are willing to do that, or you are not willing to do that, to do that, based on all the information and hours that we've had up here in doing so, and at the very bottom of it, I gave an option that I would fund the monies for the, for this project, and then I would take it at credit over the years from my water bills and water to all the cities bill. That's the very last paragraph there. I'm willing to do that.
So, and you're correct, we've heard probably hours of this discussion. I'm not even sure if we could even, even if we wanted to entertain a refund on water bills, that they don't court like, we could probably do that. So, okay, I, and again, we all heard the same.
Sure.
Sure, the same. First off, if you guys have any comments or questions before we proceed? Or anything else to add or want to guard?
I've never seen it in depressed curve, no pictures anywhere, no, nothing, I don't, I don't feel like it is, because the old part of the curve looks just like a rollback curve, what they put back in there, so. I don't know that it was ever there in the first place, or what it was, nobody can show us what it was before it was tore out. What it appeared to be was a regular rollback curve. There was one depressed entrance up by the stop sign, and it's been there for many, many years. That's the only one that I saw.
You are the one that brought the picture to life in the last meeting. And I showed you where it was a nearly flat entry, and how you can say you've never seen it.
No, it didn't show.
You had the picture in your file. You were my best witness last two weeks.
No, not for that, because I said all along that it never looked like a depressed curve.
Well, it certainly, it certainly was, whether, whether it looked
Right here's the picture we were talking about.
Whether you're considering it, let someone else look at it and tell me I'm wrong, I'm fine with that, I like to learn.
I'll look at it.
What I see is destroyed. I mean, that's all there is, it's destroyed, there's nothing there, it was all busted out. The asphalt was up to the rollback curve.
Its condition is not the issue whatsoever. Its use, the condition, if it was broken down or not, doesn't change its character. You don't take a four-and-a-half-inch curve and beat it down where it looks like that. I grant you, it was older, but it was what I purchased with the, with the land.
The four-and-a-half-inch curve, she preferred it to put in, probably eighty-nine, ninety, that is never moved. The other part of the curve that was replaced was busted and broke down from having the large trucks driving through there, and it was replaced at town standards, four-inch.
And you, and you aptly named it in the last meeting, you call it a depressed curve. And you still agree, you still agree that's what I had?
You're asking for a depressed curve, a rollback curve, or any standard subdivision or anyplace else in town, is what we put back in. That depressed curve you're talking about was put along Walnut Street on different driveways back in the eighties or early nineties when that road was reconstructed to match existing drives. Your whole parking lot came out, there was nothing to match up to, it was curved as put back into town standards. Would allow you to put your driveway anywhere along that corridor that you wanted to, and it didn't restrict it anywhere.
That was the entry of the Walnut Street, except for the one right up by the stop sign at that was the entry that you just described, that you took out.
Still there, that four-and-a-half-inch curve is still there in front of your approach.
That is, you moved the drain to inhibit my usage of half of the depressed curve. You moved it to the south, because that's what you do, I mean, you know your job, right?
There was no curve, there was no drain there. We had the drain, did you replace it, did it have a drain, this water standing?
Yes, right, you moved it, and instead of, instead of putting a flat, a flat drain in, you put a four-and-a-half-inch curve, a rolled drain, rolled curve. And if you want to deny that I had it, I'd love to go down that route with you. If you want to say I never had a depressed curve there, then put it upon me to prove, show you that I have, that I had it.
I don't think that's the question, Bob, I think if there was one there, I think it's been used. What we've stated is, what's put back is the town standards, and that's what was put back. And again, I've heard, we've heard this saying of people like a rehashing. I'm prepared to make the motion to reject the petitioner's request to tear it out and reinstall a different curve at the town's expense. Got the first and the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
All right, so next steps on this would be to get with Adam, throw permit right now? When you get a permit, go to the next step, if Mr. Farrell would like to have a different style curve than what's currently there, what would he have?
He just needs to get a right-of-way permit. And then the actual location for our access control ordinance along Walnut Street.
And how quickly, how long, if they turn around, and they can be turned around there too?
I haven't read this.
You can have, you can have that.
Well, I know, but you made a ruling on something that is purported to be an allowance of a four-and-a-half-inch curve for an entry, and I have no idea, I need to restart it. But you show, somebody just show me, where does that, all I have is just language. Have you looked at?
To be clear, the motion was to simply deny your request.
Have you looked at that, sir?
Yes.
Are you in agreement that that allows a four-and-a-half?
I'm not, your lawyer here to answer your question.
No, but you're, you're the one that's supposed to keep us in the middle of the road here, supposed to keep things on the, on the, up and up. If you agree, I said, I said all along, if there is a code, and you can quote me the code, I can read the code, you can as well, that tells me that a four-and-a-half-inch roll curve is acceptable for an entry, I'm on my own, I mean, I have no problem with that, but just to rule against me, almost
You're more than welcome to take this with you, Bob.
It's the town ordinance, it's the town
You show me where it said that.
It's the town ordinance that has the different types of curves that are acceptable.
What's the exception there?
The ordinance two thousand and sixteen.
I will look at it, but in all honesty, this is the document that I would have to have. I don't think it's right, you know, even, even though the document might allow it, I just don't, don't think from a You know, even, even though the document might allow it, I just don't, don't think from a, from an ethical standpoint or a moral standpoint that I should have something that has been there for decades, and you take it out and give me something that is not common. Do we have any other four and a half, four inch curves in the town of Fortville to go from a street to a commercial entrance? Just point me to it and I'll go look. Just one example, and I'm fine.
Joe, anything that comes to mind?
The curve that was replaced and put in was three and four inches, the town standard, not four and a half. You measured four and a half where it is not anywhere near his approach, his approach and wide to encompass. An old portion of curve that was maybe a half inch higher, but I did not measure it personally.
But it's what I have to use, it's what I have to use, you, you...
I think you were actually awarded was a twenty-four, twenty-foot wide drive, which the board was never that wide. So if you went back to what we originally poured, the three inch or the four inch high, your driver type in the same width as was prior, and we're probably all the way into three for the four inch ride, not the four and a half you extended it to.
Well, I would just ask you to think about it in the future. I'm not talking about going forward, I, I know what I have to do, okay? But what I'm saying, think about it, and when's the next time you're going to offer any new person that comes to town or old person that comes to town, you're gonna offer them a four and a half inch curve, a four inch curve, and make them live with it? Thank you, that's all I'm asking you to do. Thank you very much.
Alright, we're gonna move on to the paper reports, Joe.
Just a couple of quick items for you.
That's good.
One, township or board has got one hundred members. Leaving his post. So public and attorney is wanting to hold a caucus here in this facility. Waiting for our policies and our rate structures in order to waive those fees that are asking used to come through the town's agency with your blessing to waive the fees for those.
How much is the fee?
Two.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee from there, to, in order to hold a rebellion caucus, to fill the open township trust advisory. Got the first and the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another thing, I got here on the list, is, they brought this to me, there's some work that needs to be done to create a plant on the networks. There's some mechanicals, some rail, and stuff that needs to be built. This price we came up with was twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Was not able to find anybody else to do that kind of work. So they come to the council asking for approval to apply for that. Obviously there to, there's the other, there's, I think I had to spend a lot of money on this.
It's also a solid balance.
They were placing a plan there.
Yes, they had worked in there. I'll make a motion to allow Joe to approve the cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars for the request.
It was point seven, oh, I said twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Alright, not to, not to, yeah. Not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars as requested. We have a first.
Second.
I have first and second, all favor?
Aye.
And the only other thing I want to bring up is again, I want you to be thinking about it, and when we put on the agenda for the crash contract, we've got to figure out if we're gonna continue to offer a crash the same way we're offering it now, and mix it up, get some ideas. Like if the bids put together for that. The contract has been here six months, that seems like a long time, but... To deliver toads, pick up toads and make plans, maybe order toads in advance, depending on who does it next time.
I'd say go ahead, don't put it on the next council, they might have a plan. For the ones, the ones after that, go ahead and put it on that agenda, that gives us a month to...
Have you already put it out to bid?
We have, we have to decide what to bid, yeah. I'm gonna say we're leaving it like this. The residents are gaining, you know, the rate gain. Want to see from the town's perspective. It's convenient, but we'll have a lot to put it out there, so at least that was worth our conversation.
I always know that, one of the things we looked at with this last contract, toads versus recycling. Dumpsters and all that stuff.
The bids, the bids will be put out for how long? I don't remember anything from this last, or maybe throw the bids out and ask the company?
What's required around that, thirty days or something?
So then put it at the end of September. I mean, that's our place, it might be twenty. In the September, beginning of October, a point we can start seeing what those are, and maybe plans, so that's probably right time. Perfect.
Got all my list, and that is all I have to say.
Any questions for Joe? Are you sure? Okay, Heath, I don't see Heath. Let's see.
Heath? Yes, sir.
You got a lot, dude.
I, I don't really have a lot, I have a couple of things. And Alex, this is more for you, I know when we appointed the board of police commissioners, there was a council appointee, and I believe by statute, Robert can still stay on for his, I think you got two more years, right?
That's a good question, as far as, when I was last appointed, correct? Because I will be up at the end of this year, so effective January first. Was mine a three, or was mine a...
It's a three, you're on, I think you're...
We have to go back.
I have, I have to break it down, we talked about the police commission meeting, but I didn't know if by statute, I think you can continue to serve, and I just want to clarify with Alex that that was so true.
It'll actually depend on our ordinance, so it'll with the ordinance.
Okay.
Call up and if we set it up to have, that the council required to have announcement, I think we did.
It could go two ways.
And I think I'd rather have it that way, I appreciate what you're saying.
So we just need to check the ordinance. I don't think it's a statutory issue, it's gonna be how it's set.
I know that statute says when setting it up, you can have either a council appoint it, or you can just have a member if they choose to sit on the board for that term, but I wanted to double check, so.
We'll look at it.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, just so everyone was aware of what we're going to do, what we're trying to do.
Oh, we got a question back there.
Yeah, Robert Kirby, you were appointed at the same time I was. I turned this off.
So if I line up, okay, you got it written down.
I have, I'll bring it to the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Alright.
When are those meetings, Patrick?
I'm sorry?
When are those?
Quarterly. We have one upcoming Tuesday, the twelfth, July, and I believe six P M. Right, gentlemen? Yeah, before I reach to my calendar on my phone. Yes, six P M. Everybody's welcome, it's a public meeting. I know last, I had a question outside about our fuel budget. In the last meeting, we talked about it, how it's gonna be tight. I know that there was some money left over last year that got put back out of the budget, that if we get to that, that we will end up having to use some of that, so there might be some appropriations at the end of the year. Just a forethought, because fuel is outrageously high right now. And we're doing our best to kind of keep it down, but it's, it's tough. And then, last meeting, Robert and I called up before this meeting, the school with the referendum. Couple of Dr. Parker wanted to have an additional officer this year, which I told him we could staff, as long as they met some wish list that I had, which was a car, and they pay for two-thirds salary benefits and all the equipment in the car, which they agreed to. So that car is ordered, it's through the town of Fortville. The town will purchase the car, the school reverses for everything, lights, striping, computer, everything involved will certainly be reimbursed. They'll pay for it, but it will be a town asset. And so we can control the insurance, who gets to drive it, it's gonna be completely marked. We have that in, have we got that in writing and agreed to? I don't have that in writing yet, but I have that in a somewhat full meeting.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I have a meeting with Derek Shelton next week, I believe. Exactly, please commission me, I want you to know. And then they were going to pay, so now I will have two officers at the school, which means they're paying four-thirds of the salary. So I would like to, since there's gonna be that extra funding, that salary and benefits available since the school is eating the cost, I would like to backfill that position through this hiring process. Strictly because this hiring process, I don't know, it went really well. We're kind of in the middle of it, beginning of it, doing some backgrounds, but we had five certified applicants. All through, well, one was through Kentucky, and four through Indiana, which was great for us. We've never had five at one time, and they all seem to be pretty good applicants, they're still currently employed. They're just looking to leave their respective departments and somewhere different. So I have a very good hiring pool, and I'd like to be able to backfill that position if possible to do that. So reset it for everybody, how many, how many full-time officers we have now? I have slotted for eleven. For eleven, how many we have now? We have nine full-time currently. So we got two open spots. Correct. To fill. To fill. That has not been offered to anybody. That has not been offered, well, I have given a, someone to go to perf. Okay. But it has to go through the police commission before we can bring it up, so I'm bringing packets. Right, so always good to do a reset, I just want to make sure everybody in the room, the chair paper knows, this is filling your current staffing obligations, not a new add to staff. This would be backfilling for Diane going to school. This would be filling her position adding to staff. Not a twelve officer, this is filling within the current eleven that you already have been authorized. I'm going to fill the eleven, but I would like the twelve, since the school is eating the cost of basically two-thirds of two officers. That's why I asked the question, so it is gonna be a new, right, new, okay, alright. So that's just for us, obviously you're gonna go to the police commission, have you spoken to Missy or Beth or... I have spoken to Missy and Beth, we had a meeting with Joe last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, it all runs together at this point. But there is the money, obviously, in this year's budget, and then through the next year's budget, with the school eating the cost of the salary and benefits, that that budget money will be available for salary and benefits, and I have the vehicles and the equipment that'll be needed. And the reason I'm asking that is, you know, our officers are working very hard. They've had some pretty serious incidents lately, which we had one officer on duty that day, which is kind of scary for her, for any officer, male or female, doesn't matter. You're going to an attempted murder with one officer, and you're waiting for county and other officers to show up, just so you clear house, and you don't know where the shooter's at, and all this and that. My goal ultimately with all the staffing is to put two officers on the street at all times. And that, and that's, I mean, now we have it, they flex, like we have a middle shift to cover in between for our busier hours, but I would like two full-time officers. And that allows me to focus on some office stuff, still works, road stuff when required. I think everybody would agree with what there would be a good place to get, just make sure it works. Yeah. I'll get with that.
Of course, they'll still come and cover us?
They, they have been, Art was on a program in progress last week, before the officer came down, and he ended up at Denver's because of the noise complaint, which wasn't getting that loud, but someone had complained. But we had to have another officer come cover, because our officer was dealing with more, more serious things. You know, for them, that's a four or five minute drive, if it was something more serious besides a noise component, well, not these stats. I want to make sure our town staff one hundred percent. The question came about outside about fuel, and they've seen officers taking calls via the phone, you know, can we do this? Are we gonna do this? And I'm like, no, I want the officers on the streets, patrolling the streets. It's the best deterrent there is. You know, if you're doing something bad, you see a police car driving down the street, you're stopped doing that something bad. If they know they're sitting somewhere and just answering the telephone, we're not gonna do that. Our men and women are gonna be on the streets, and they're gonna patrol as they always do. And again, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, we could, actually record the last meeting. No, I have not been able to do it in a while. Wait, we can expect to ask you? I just got the last month's numbers. Right. So I should be able to have that to the police commissioners, and then the next meeting I'll get it checked. Alright. Questions, anything else for Keith? I know I threw a lot at you, I know it's late, but... No, I don't have any more, I mean, I'm, I'm hungry right now, so. I'm not hungry yet, give me five minutes. Alright, thanks, Keith. Thank you. Alex?
I only got five or six.
Obviously, that's your questions, right? Anything for Alex? Public comments? The additional public comments?
Can we get Jake Decatur the next?
Yeah, right, exactly. Alright, I see now, Jake Decatur the next week. We, we've been a long time. I'm not gonna hear any of Chris. Go ahead, while I run these, right? Alright.
Councilman, you have to move the capital comments.
Alright, I'm hearing them.
I asked Joe about my question, I get complaints about bushes and trees hanging over the sidewalks, and he does think there's an ordinance, so I will let the people know, they need to go in on the town side and give you red dresses, right? Because I know we're in town, that's our, source map, and really busy right now.
Well, and not, I mean, I already had my time, but they had two that. You know, we've got one guy out waiting to have some medical procedure done, and I've got another one, surgery.
But they haven't come out and help? Oh. Some younger ones don't have to do that anymore.
We're breaking a wall.
I don't have anything tonight, I'm gonna make a motion to the prison sign vouchers. All favorites? I'll make a motion to adjourn at ten oh six. All favor? Thank God, I'm hanging there.